All right, let's go ahead and call to order the City of Farmers Branch, City Council's strategic plan. This is a special called meeting. It is Wednesday, January 26, 2022. The time is 9:00 a.m. We will begin with our introduction. You know, for those of you who it's your first time, welcome. It's definitely an exciting process for the rest of us, kind of old hat. But this is the fun part. You know, this is where we get to make some decisions that guide not only the city in terms of what we're looking for during the budget process, but definitely helps guide staff who will be spending the next several months really diving into figuring out how are we going to accomplish the goals that we set today. And we're going to do that by first taking a look at where we were last year, some of the goals that we had, how that aligns with the conversation and points of interest that we've all brought up in previous meetings so that we can work through those today, see where things really shake out and how we can add to our critical business outcomes. And once we go through that, which John, I believe you're going to be leading that one today, so good for you. You know, I think there's a lot to discuss. I want to be mindful of the time that we give to each one of these items, just so that we have enough time to hear the presentations from staff, definitely leave enough time for discussion between all of us, just so that we can make sure that everyone's points, opinions, and ideas are heard, received, and we as a group can make a decision that we feel is best for the community at the time, especially as we look towards our next year. And so with that, I'm excited to get going. But before we jump into A2, I do want to give Mr. Cox an opportunity to provide an introduction from his side as well.
Good, thank you. Thank you all for being here. And I know it's a, it can be sometimes a long day, and I appreciate the fact that this comes on the heels of a Saturday meeting. But the two kind of coincide with each other in terms of, we're talking about strategic planning, and what we talked about Saturday at that joint meeting with P&amp;Z, that certainly was kind of a little bit more holistic than just the city budget view of the city. So I think these work real well together, kind of in combination. So I appreciate that we had both so close to one another. As the mayor mentioned, this is kind of the kickoff for the, even though, you know, it seems like we just started this fiscal year, this is kind of the kickoff for FY23 in terms of what is the overall thought and vision of what we should be doing from a city perspective in the future. And so this, your feedback and information provided today will help us as we start developing the budget for FY23. You know, there are some set topics on here, but you know, there are the way this agenda is designed. If there are other things, and I know you probably have many more things you'd like to discuss, please feel free to throw them into the mix. And this is meant to be interactive and lots of good open discussion here. So look forward to the dialogue as the day goes on. For those of you that have not been here, the restrooms are, it's just, it's one restroom at a time, so it's right across the way there. And we'll have lunch somewhere around noon, but if we need to take breaks or anything, just let us know. But other than that, thanks, and Mr. Lannan?
Thank you. Feel free to hold your applause.
Usually it's afterwards.
So normally, when I do a presentation, I start with a birthday, but I thought since we're in a new building, new year, new council, we change it up a little bit so it's at this day in history. I'm sure most of you remember January 26, 1985. American Music Awards. Favorite rock pop band, duo, or group? Favorite rock pop album? Favorite rock pop new artist? Any guesses?
Prince.
Michael Jackson.
Bon Jovi.
Wim.
Mary J. Blige.
These are all great. I'm thinking this is right in the wheelhouse of Cristal and Tracy, and maybe Robert.
Late Great Eddie Money.
Spice Girls.
No way.
Spice Girls. Man, they came on the scene and they dominated. I was a big, I was a big fan of the Spice Girls.
I think it was 98.
You can see Posh is sitting right in front of that Eiffel Tower, man. This is awesome stuff.
Eighty-five or ninety-five?
Baby Spice wasn't born yet.
Oh, this is, this is, this is ninety-eight.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
The Spice Girls. Their favorite, their big song that year?
Spice Up Your Life.
Wanna Be, remember that? They had those great lyrics. And so the reason I think they were so popular is the depth of their lyrics. I'll tell you what I want, what I really, really want. So tell me what you want, what you really, really want. I'll tell you what I want, what I really, really want. So tell me what you want, what you really, really want. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna, really, really, really wanna zig-a-zig-ah. Remember that? So that's one of those songs where you hear it and you sing it. I never dreamed that it said zig-a-zig-ah. I thought I was, so anyway, I looked it up, and I didn't know, what does that even mean? So I went to Webster's Not Recognized, so I went to my trusted source, Urban Dictionary.
That's good beginning. Yeah, be careful.
To wear excessive amounts of makeup and platform shoes and sing about absolutely nothing. So.
That sounds like the definition came after.
Yeah. So what, so what does that have to do with our National Community Survey? Well, we just asked our residents to tell us what you want, what you really, really want, and we had a great turnout. We had 627 responses, mailed out 2,700 invitations. It was, the scores were based on a weighted algorithm. For example, if we had a predominant response for males versus females, it was weighted where that was, those voices were exactly the same. So we feel like we've got great, great detail. We also, the confidence, the confidence interval is 95% plus or minus a 6% deviation, and we're compared to over 600 other national community benchmarks. So when I was talking with Polco, the group that produces the survey, I was asking about these other 600, and they said, well, think about it. If you're a community that isn't doing particularly well, you probably don't want to do this survey, or you're benchmarked against other cities. These are really cities that are leading cities that want to know how we're doing and want to hear from the residents. So we feel pretty good about the group that we're compared with. District responses were pretty fairly well spread out. So we put these on a heat map so you can kind of see where they were. Had a high of 181 and a low of 94, but for the most part, it's pretty well spread out. We had a, we were really afraid that it was going to be concentrated in one part of the city and not hearing from the other one, but we felt like we really heard from across the board. The survey was broken down into 10 areas. Safety, mobility, community design, inclusivity and engagement, health and wellness, the economy, our utilities, parks and rec, the natural environment, and education, arts and culture. And then our citizens weighted that. So the, on the left, it's quality, on the right is importance. So the further you are to the right, the more important this is to the minds of our residents. And the higher you are, the better that we rate it in terms of quality. So you can see, safety is number one in importance, and it's also very high in quality. And as we go, as we go through, the one that kind of falls in the importance and quality is inclusivity and engagement, but that varies depending on the district. So as we kind of dig into this a little bit further into districts, we'll see some discrepancies. Overall, residents experience a high quality of life and feel safe in their community. Residents approve of the transportation system in the city. Support for arts and culture in Farmers Branch is strong, and we're getting more and more involved in arts and culture. The economy is a priority for our residents. Parks and Recreation is a bright spot, and Farmers Branch were a city in a park that was, that was a great outcome. K through 12 education may be an area of opportunity. That was the lowest scored item on there, was our residents' belief in the education system. That may be an opportunity for us from a communication standpoint, because I think the scores bear out that the district's actually doing really well. That may be an opportunity for us, and the results by district show some variation. So in terms of governance, we were, we were benchmarked against other cities, but we were also benchmarked against the federal government. So overall, customer experience serviced by Farmers Branch employees was 81%. Public Information Services was 77%, that's similar against our benchmarks. Government performance overall, overall direction the city's taken, 80%. How would you rate the quality of services provided by the city? So it's 80% good to excellent. It's now benchmarked against the federal government? It's 36% good to excellent. So I think we're viewed in much higher regard than our federal government, which I don't know, it's a huge surprise, but it's good to know that. So here are the things that, when we started really digging down into the survey, what we were able to do this year is slice this information by district. We haven't been able to do that in the past. And here are the things out of all the data that kind of stood out to us, where we had a, like the very first one, Farmers Branch is a place to work. In District 5, that's 92%, but you get down to District 1 and it's 44%. Farmers Branch is a place to retire, 92, 73, 70, but then in Districts 1 and 2, 60 and 56%. A low of 65% in overall feeling of safety. And when we looked at, we pulled up crime data to kind of look at some of these things. The crime data is fairly consistent across the district. There's some concentrations on the west side of 35. The feeling of safety is different than actual crime being reported. Police services, 66% against 95, 95, 94, 80. Animal services, it goes from 97, 87, 83, 82 to 60. Overall health and wellness opportunities, 90, 88, 83, 79, 64. Overall opportunities for education, culture, and the arts, 77, 66, 65, 59, but then down to 42. Residents' connection and engagement with their community, 72, 64, 58, 58, but then 39. Recycling, 92, 87, 77, 74, but then down to 48%. Informing residents about issues facing the community, 82%, 76%, but then we had 3, 45, 45, and 56 that were below that. We have some thoughts on that, we'll talk about later. The job Farmers Branch does at Welcome Your Residents, 73, 70, 67, 65, but then 47. Preservation of historical and cultural character of the community, we have 82, 81, 77, 74, but then down to 48. K through 12 education, which again, across the board, wasn't, wasn't rated real high, but in District 1, it was viewed at 27%. And then availability of affordable quality housing, we just had a discussion about that Saturday, 50%, but then there's 2 that are down in the 30%. So when we got together as an administration, we were tasked with, what do you, what does this tell you?
Can you go back to that slide for a minute? I just want to mention, on District 1, I don't think that's really a surprise to anyone in this room, and the reason for District 1 scores like that is, you know, 2, 3, 4, and 5, those are residents that have been with us for a long time, and that they have learned and understand the services we provide. District 1, as we all know, that's, you know, that, that went to residential in the not-too-distant past, predominantly commercial before that. You have a lot of new residents, and I think the takeaway for me this slide is, hey, we've got a bunch of new residents that have a different demographic than the rest of the city, and they don't really know us, and we don't really know them that well just yet, because we're all new to each other. And so it's an opportunity for us to build some trust, build some relationships, and certainly an opportunity to work on communication and make sure that, that they're aware of the services and that they interact with us. But quite frankly, a lot of the folks on District 1 are in apartments, and they may not be long-term folks that are going to live in Farmers Branch. And so that's another, those are just challenges, but I just want to point out, I mean, it looks like, just on the surface, it looks like, you know, District 1, my gosh, we're really falling down, but the reason for this, I want to, again, we all know this, the reason for those scores is because we're talking all about a lot of new residents that haven't had an opportunity to understand the services we provide, and we've not done a good job of potentially communicating that.
But I think too.
Hold on, Terry, head his hand up.
Go ahead, Terry, sorry.
So I'd be curious to find out, when I look at District 1, you have old one and new one. And is there a way to break out the responses from, between old and new, just to see what those older folks in the city have to say? Because like Charles said, I don't believe the newer folks are fully engaged yet, or know that much about the city.
Yeah, I think we can do that. The great thing about this is not that, you know, hey, there's a problem in District 1, it's, they're, we're communicating, we're talking, we're hearing from folks, and this gives us a great opportunity. The first step is a conversation. We've got to, there has to be that trust. If you don't, if you don't have a relationship or trust, you're not going to communicate. And we're getting, we got great communication from District 1. This gives us an amazing opportunity to move forward.
One second, Cristal.
Sorry, so I wanted to add to that. I completely agree with you, Terry, in that there, and I've heard it myself, and really, there's two components to this. There is that city communication to make sure that, and this is something that I've talked about for a few years, is having event, community events in the west side, and that's something that I know that I've been working with, you know, Mike Mashburn about, and things like that come the spring. So that's one. But then also, you know, and even, even in the, in the old District 1, I still hear that people don't feel safe, they don't feel connected, they don't feel like the community listens to them. A lot of that has to do with the lack of communication in Spanish, which I've been talking about for years. And so, and that comes with a lot of different, you know, a lot of different things that we could do there, but so for me, it's more about challenging not just, you know, in the new Mercer, you know, area, because I agree, there's a lot of transient individuals because of the fact that there are a lot of apartment dwellers, but there are also a lot of apartment dwellers that have lived there for a very, like, for a number of years. I lived there for, you know, almost four years. And so, so anyhow, we don't want to dismiss that, and so how can we be better communicative with not just those Mercer resident, those individual homeowners, but also the apartment community as well? And then also, we have to have two different plans, because like you mentioned, the demographics on the, on the existing District 1, there's still a lot of negativity towards city communication, towards a lot of different things, and we do need to do a better job. And so I hope that as we talk about this, there's, there's plans to communicate with, you know, our west side constituents, but also plans to communicate with the existing District 1 constituents. Because I will also say, in looking at the distribution of responses, when you look at the slide before, it talked, there's less percentage of individuals that were asked to even do a survey in District 1 than the rest of the city. So I don't know why that was, when you look at the percentage, but, and that may be just the way it was laid out. But, but I agree in looking at what percentages do we get when we separate those 2, because I think we'll be shocked to figure out how different they may be.
Yeah, you know, this Saturday, we talked about the comp plan. Eric told us, one of the things that was successful for them was the outreach part, and I think we've talked about adding some, some dollars to our budget, but having something just in Spanish. Having things in different districts and getting people together on their terms in the locations and times of their choosing and doing all these things. I think the comp plan gives us a great opportunity to have a massive engagement about the future of your city, and doing things like that, having one of these in Spanish and saying, I thought that, you know, when we had National Night Out at Squire Park, man, I was blown away. That was the most attended one, at least that I went to, and I think we went to 6 that night. I was blown away at how connected that group is, and how did we get, that was a great first step for us to all be there together. So I think we have an amazing opportunity with this comp plan to do a lot more things like engagement with all the districts.
Consumer merits?
Well, John just said it. I think this communication issue is not just unique to District 1.
It's not.
And you did not say that, but I just want to reemphasize that. We have new residents across all the districts, and so I think it's this opportunity that is in front of us to make sure that we're promoting the services that we have, the good services, the economical services that we have, and just make sure that that communication is, you know, all communication is good, but the focused communication, timely and in the right spot, and Jeff and I have had these conversations a couple of times already. There's so many different mediums for this, and we need to collectively work on informing those residents in the manner that they want to get it, whether it's print, whether it's on a, you know, our friends in Addison put a monstrous, you know, digital board on Beltline. If you've driven Beltline, you've seen it. We can think about things like that in the future, if that's something we choose to, but there's, the opportunities are prevalent in front of us. And so the emphasis is, it's not just in District 1, old versus new. It needs to be a holistic, citywide approach. Thanks.
So we were asked as an administration to look at that data and say, what does it, what does it tell you? What are your top three takeaways from it? And I came up with invest, protect, and connect in and around District 1. We have got to, as you drive around the city, we don't have the same level of investment in District 1 as we do in some of our other areas, some of it's timing, but we have the 35 betterments coming. That's going to greatly improve both Valwood and Valley View in the way that we have big folks enter into our community. The Builders of Hope program, I think, is going to be great, starting small, but I really think that's going to take off, and we, you know, we have 10 other lots that are eligible for that program after the first 5. The Branch Connection, the Recreation Center, while they're not in District 1, they're used heavily by District 1, they're walkable, renovations requiring at both. Since we went to National Night Out, we can't stop thinking about Squire Park. I know Mike Mashburn and his team have been working on how to reimagine that park, more things that we can do there. We've, you know, tried to even look at other opportunities for property in that area. Reimagining in Drive and Valley View, we have an opportunity with, going forward with our, with our grants to kind of create some complete streets and sections of those too in that area. Public art installations are going to continue, we have our first mural up, and I think there's interest in seeing more of those. Mustang Station folks have approached us about, can we have a mural on the backs of Cox Farms? Are there, you know, can we go talk to Mondo at the Tire Shop, Terry? You had mentioned how that sticks out, maybe there's an opportunity there to make that where it's a focal piece, it is visible. So maybe there's an opportunity there to do more things. So there, this isn't an inclusive list, but these are the things as we were brainstorming that, that are, that are in the works, that are part of the CBOs. To protect, double down on public safety. Leo's working on an apartment security plan, I think, I think there's a meeting next week.
Tomorrow.
Friday, next Fri-, is it tomorrow? Oh, it's tomorrow.
Friday, Friday.
With the apartment folks, and we have 18 or so that are kind of, if I'm not mistaken. So that's great to start talking about that. I live at Mustang Station, they're already putting in new security measures there, they're installing cameras, putting in a new gate, so I'm seeing some things happening in our area. Full-time police staffing, in this last budget, we approved 2 full-time and 5 over hires. I know Chief is working hard with the HR team to continue to try to populate that, but that gives us hope that we can get people and get them on the streets and fully, you know, we're wearing our team out to a degree because we have vacancies and injuries and vacations and things like that. That's going to help everybody. Justice Center renovations, and Charles was asking me, well, how in the world does, tell me how Justice Center renovations helps the citizen. The first thing is, we have internal customers and external customers, and that building has been left behind. It is crap, but when I was talking with Chief Stokes about the plan, and this is the plan that the administrative, administration, the team came up with, there's going to be, right now, there's going to have like soft rooms for folks to come in and give testimony. Right now, if you can imagine, if you have a crime against a child and they have to go up to the police station and give us testimony, it's intimidating. And you're sitting in front of a desk with someone there, where they're creating some privacy for crimes against children or victims to come in, where it's very private, and it's, they're called soft rooms, where it's more conversational, and we're with you, it's okay, this is, you know, this isn't an intimidating situation. They're centralizing investigations, so right now, they have, depending on what, what area you're in, you're all spread apart. They want to have all investigations together and share intel. Just because this is a crime doesn't mean that doesn't, hey, wait a minute, we're working on something similar, maybe there's some parallels, getting those groups together. In the jail, there's going to be another workday. So when you come in and process someone, there's only so many workstations that are there. This is going to allow this to expand, and that's something that was loud and clear when we talked with our detention staff about, about the facility. It's like, it's too crowded, and you have people waiting. If you, things sometimes happen in an imperfect way, so you have a number of people coming in at one time, and it gets to be overly crowded and not necessarily the safest situation for our team to work in. Install license plate readers on the west side, so I think there's 2 locations where we're going to have the LPRs that are put up, that are going to help on our west side. And those have been a great tool for us. We have, it's amazing, the intel that, that our team has been able to get from there. And also the Unidos program. When I was talking with, with Chief Stokes, they're really excited about the Unidos program, and another way to get into the community and communicate and talk and build trust. And then connect, connect the west side with new residents, and there's new restaurants that are coming, which will bring people from other parts of the city over where it will be kind of our area. The Gas Monkey Live concept is really exciting, and I think that's going to be something that is walkable for the team over there. The West Side Art Trail, there will be art installation starting this year for the next 5 years. There'll be some level of art that's put out throughout the, the walking trail. Depending on how this works out with the townhomes, there's approximately 5 acres of land that's going to be dedicated to the city for a city-owned and maintained park. And then targeted communications, so one of the things with, in talking with Polco, we have the ability for folks that responded to send things back out to those, to that group. So we can send things out, there's different levels of surveys that we can continue to do. They have a program where they do kind of a next steps workshop that they typically do with councils, where you can dig really deep into this. But the other thing that we've been talking about, and I'm going to give credit to Terry, he does a great job getting information out to, to his constituents. When you look at, you know, I know what's going on in the city, I think District 4 and 5 rated the highest. One of the things that we've heard, and I think, David, you've mentioned this, is having something that's more uniform, and we've been talking about perhaps creating a newsletter, a template that we put together for each district, so it would be, you know, District 1, Cristal's picture, and stories that typically go out in Branch Review, but an area for you to editorialize. You know, hey, thank you, but that's not something that very many people have talent, I don't have the time to do it, I don't know how to do that. We can set that up where it's a template, so we have our newsletter going out, but if you want to send something out to your districts, could be English, Spanish, it could be, hey, I'm Tracy, and here's what's going on, and here's something you need to know that affects our district, because it doesn't jump off Branch Review that this is happening in our district, or this is important to you. So that's a tool that, if that's of interest, I think that's something that we could do and put together and say, here it is, put in your column, and then we're going to trust you to have some way of communicating with, with your constituent groups. We think that might be an interesting tool for you. But that's, that's, that's what our takeaways were from the survey. The things that jumped out to us were those 3 things. Invest, protect, and connect. What are your thoughts? We went over the survey, I think, back in November. Was there anything that jumped out that we need to do this? Now, we're, we're at the, the next agenda item is our critical business outcomes, kind of where we are, what's, what's going on. Those were built from our budget retreat back in August, and so now we're kind of in the reporting out mode, but we're starting to build, this is the step that starts to build the next one. So what are your thoughts? I'm going to sit down for a minute and let you all talk.
The only thing that jumped out at me that I want to figure out how we can set a benchmark for it next time we do the survey, and I know sometimes the opinions of people when the survey go out is based on the temperature of the city at the time, and not always truly reflective of the overall, you know, period that you would be looking at. But when I see, how do they rate and perceive the quality of services provided is excellent, 28%, I want that number higher. Yeah. Like, what is a reasonable benchmark that we should push for to where X number of people believe that everything is excellent and that is consistent over time? I mean, if you just take the numbers as they are, I mean, you're at 80% that are excellent. But when you look at that, you know, that's, that's good, but I'd love to see the excellent number higher and the good number a little lower. Yeah. How do you get them kind of in line? Because shooting for what is good or better at a benchmark, but then how much of that is excellent at a benchmark is, is something I'd like us to maybe focus on in the future, because I want people that live here, that are considering moving here, to have that perception, to have those talking points out there that, that is what's perceived. Because I know a lot of people have always, you know, they love the trash pickup, they love. Yeah. A lot of the things that, that we have, so, but how is it across the board at that level and from, from the numbers that came in? And that was the only thing to me that, that stood out, that I was like, you know, is an opportunity to get better.
You know, from a staff standpoint, we're very proud of the services that we provide, and we think they're great, and we look at other cities, and sometimes there's a perception issue. We need to do a better job of telling people what we do. We just take it for granted that we do some of these things because we don't get complaints about them, but we need to let people know some of the things. But the other part, sometimes there's a reality situation, I mean, District 1's speaking to us and saying, we're, you know, this isn't good enough for us. And I think we need to, I think there's an opportunity for both the perception and the reality. the reality standpoint to build that bridge. But I think we could certainly do better of letting people know, did you know, did you know, did you know? And it's hard to get that, you know, Jeff does a great job of getting information out, but somebody has to read it. And that's why we thought maybe that district newsletter might be helpful because it's more personal. We're sending something out for the entire city from the city. And there's not a, you know, there's Charles's picture on it, and I don't know if people, that's a turnoff or, or what if they see, but if it's, you were elected, these are, this is your group, they picked you. It was competitive. There's not anybody in this room that ran unopposed. Well, Cristal, I think maybe you did.
Dude, I was the lucky one.
Yeah. But it's, if they see, hey, I know, that's my neighbor, this is what my neighbor's telling me. I think that would help too.
What, what I'd like to see and what I took, took away from this, one, I, I love the idea of us having individual districts. I know that when David and I first were elected, he and I discussed it at length. And, and so I think that that's a great idea and that, I think that's going to reach out to more people. I think when, when you're inundated with, with emails, you have a tendency, once you've, once you've reviewed it once or twice, then it's like, oh, this is, this is something I get all the time, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna blow through it. It's different when there's a personal connection, when they're, when, when it is representative or someone that they elected. So I think that's, I think that's a great idea and, you know, building up that database of those emails. I know that we would need to look at that and how we, we can legally do that and, and follow the rules that, that are set with that. But the, the other area that I'd like to see us focus on is the thing with education. I think we need to look at the school district and, and look at, at a more collaborative situation there on how we can, as a city, get the information out of, of the great things that are happening, you know, whether that's in our newsletters. You know, we have a tendency, I think, as a city to, you know, at city, city utilities, at city services, and that's separate from our schools. But I don't think our residents see it that way. I think, I think they, they look at it as an overall.
Yeah.
And so us being able to celebrate what's happening in our schools, you know, from a city standpoint would help. And it, and it's, you know, that's a, that's a marketing point. You know, a lot of people pick where they live based on those school districts. And so, you know, we've, we've, we've got some reputation issues that, that really are just PR, that, that, that just need better, better PR. And so, you know, I'd like to see a, a collaboration, whether, you know, whether we do that in those district emails. I think that could be something we could, we could definitely do, you know, where we highlight one of the schools in our districts that, that has, has got an exciting thing going on. Or if it's even when we're, we're, you know, telling, telling residents about what's going on in the city, including those events that are happening with the schools, whether it be, you know, the, the arts program at Turner, what plays they have going on, you know, whether it's, I mean, Turner's my favorite because, you know.
Personal.
But, or if it's, you know, or if there's something fun going on at the elementary schools, just some way to cross over.
The renovations at Field, it's, it's a completely different school.
It is, it is.
Wow.
Well, and Field is, is, has statistically been our, kind of our problem area as far as reputation, which I think all middle schools suffer from that because middle school just stinks. That's just no one's favorite. And that, what they're doing over there and, and that remodel that occurred and, you know, how they're looking at things, it's a, it's an exciting, it's an exciting endeavor that's going on and we should be celebrating that and really talking that up, so.
Can I add something here?
Yeah.
Is it appropriate for me to add just a couple of remarks regarding communication?
That remains to be said.
Well, you could evaluate the quality. But this, the newsletter issue is something I am constantly pondering. And so none of us need more content in our inboxes, right? None of us need more things to read or to check off. And yet the city really has a vested interest in communicating the good and the current and the accurate information to everyone who lives in the city or who does business with the city. So it's a fine line. I think we've done a pretty good job of rethinking the newsletter and tweaking and adding some elements that make it more timely and more engaging and maybe fun. But we have, I have not done a good job of expanding the readership. That's what I struggle with. And short of just going out door-to-door and knocking or with hangers, maybe, you know, posted, you know, signs that are posted along the driveways and the medians, we've tried that with FBTX Connect and we, you know, presented the new ad, we've tried to encourage people to sign up for the newsletter. But I'm still looking for ways to grow the newsletter email database.
I would do that through social media.
And social media is one way to do it, for those who are on social media. Nextdoor is probably our best platform for that. But I, I applaud, I would love to help provide a template, but at the same time, it's a double-edged sword because I don't think people need more newsletters. People need quality content.
Yeah.
That they see value in where there is relevant, current, timely information delivered to them in a manageable, bite-sized way. So if you have ideas, I welcome them. If you want to create a template for an individual newsletter, we can certainly do that. But I don't want, I don't think it's necessary to duplicate the information I'm already sending out a newsletter so that you can again send out another newsletter that people are likely to ignore. So I'm, I'm looking for ideas. It's something every, everybody, you know, every brand is trying to figure out, how do we get good information, advertising or not, in front of the right audience? So it's a challenge. If you have ideas, I'd love to have that conversation, and Dave and I have already had a few. The other thing has to do with the school district, and I just want to quickly mention, I love that idea and we, I have already begun a, a conversation about collaboration with the school district in terms of what we can do with the, with FBTV. And they do have an AV department, they've got some brilliant kids all throughout the school district, primarily at the high school level, but not exclusively. And so we're starting a conversation now about how we can put content, how we can, A, grow more viewership for FBTV. So I mean, I think it's a wasted resource if we don't have more people who are coming to it for news and information. And two, provide a resource for the students to learn something about creating content that's relevant, that's accurate, that's timely, that's high-quality, that we would feel is suitable for our TV station. We've got this, a whole channel, twenty-four-seven programming, and I think we can do a better job of making it a real resource for the city, and one way is to work with the school district. So that conversation's already begun, and if you have suggestions there, I'd love to hear them.
I've heard those rumors and I was really excited. So that's, that's cool.
Trey, can I, can I follow up?
Thank you.
On one thing that I, I found out, when I went through some of the model homes of the different neighborhoods in, in District One and just talked to the, the folks that were in those model homes, the realtors, I guess, and I was shocked at how many times, because I heard the story over and over again, how many times they said that, that folks would come in and the first thing they would ask is, tell me about the school system. I've gone to this, I guess it's greatschools.com or whatever the name, it's good schools. It had, they all said the same thing.
Yeah.
And they said they go to this website and it ranks the schools in the neighborhood you're thinking of moving into.
Correct.
And the, and, and the concern was, with Carrollton Farmers Branch, the, that rating was not good.
Yeah.
And that was a turnoff for a lot of parents. And I, I didn't know that that was such a predominant website. So one thing that might be useful and might be interesting is to maybe better understand the metrics and work with the school district. Are there things we can do to perhaps help those metrics change in a good way? Because I'm not sure how that website is finding out the good stuff about our school or if, if they're just using raw data, which probably, they probably are, that is making us look bad when there might be a way to influence that data.
Well, it's, it's parent feedback, Good Schools is parent feedback and their scores, their testing scores. And then they benchmark that, you know, by the district, and then they benchmark that by the state, and then it's, and then it's rated nationally. And so that's, that's where that, that information comes from. And so, but the schools could definitely encourage, because that's, that's a problem is people who have a problem tend to talk a lot more than people who are satisfied. And so that's something that the schools may need to look at internally is how do we get our parents who are satisfied and, and who, who think that these are great schools? How do we get them, you know, to, to go online and, and, and help that part of the rating? And then of course, the, you know, the testing scores are more harder than they are, so.
Start.
So, and we've kind of already touched on it, the collaboration piece. The collaboration is so important, and one of the things that I've found in the years of working in community relations is you have to meet them where they are. So there's no point of having folks go to different places to get the, the things that they need. And so these collaborations are so important. So when a school is having a, you know, a parent teacher night or they're having something like that, you know, I'll, I'll give you an example. Strickland has, used to have, or I think they still do, had a, you know, when they did a parent teacher night, they asked organizations to come to do booths. Children's Health would come to talk about our telehealth program, all of these things. Why not us start participating in those? So that way parents know, hey, by the way, sign up for the newsletter, this is your calendar for the rec center and things like that. I think we need to do a better job of collaborating with our existing organizations like our churches because we have a huge church population in our, in our city. And that's something I've been talking about for a very long time. I think we need to leverage those. So we meet people, people where they are and we're not having to find new ways to communicate because I think they're there. I get, so many people tell me that our newsletter is great. I think it's just, there are a lot of other things that people are interested about. They're interested about what's going on with economic development. I see all this new construction, but we don't know what's going on. Another thing is revamping the way we do our zoning because we have a zoning notice, but there isn't a lot of information when it comes to what is this zoning actually about, right? So I think we need to be more proactive than reactive in that regard. And I know one thing I've already talked to, to Charles about is adding that, you know, that, the email option on all of our zoning notices, we're working, which we're going to start doing, because that's a huge issue. Because people don't know, they, they don't have the time to maybe drop it off. So that's one thing, is just using our collaboration efforts and strengthening those a lot better. The other thing is, you know, I'm having a meeting with realtors because one of the things that I've seen in other cities is that we, they do packages, welcome packages. So if a realtor sells a home in the city, like in Plano, they can ask the city for this package. So I've talked to Allison about that. So we're having a meeting. I think that, those types of things and making that bigger.
Yeah, we do do that.
Well, I'm, and, but I think a lot of realtors don't, they don't, they don't know about it.
We, we deliver directly to the house.
Well, yeah. Well, I, I've heard that realtors don't know about it, so.
Well, a lot of realtors that are lazy, I can tell you.
Well, but, but I think those are the types of things that we need to communicate better because I, I don't think that, that, you need to really figure out ways that the new residents really understand what's out there and how they can communicate with the city. Because when I'm, you know, and working with, like the West Side, a lot of folks don't know how to sign up for things. They don't know all of these things that are going on. And so, so that's another thing. And then the third thing related to communications is, you know, I really applaud the communications department for, for really trying to reach out to the Hispanic community, but I still hear that, you know, they still want something tangible in Spanish. And I don't know the best way to do that. I know we added the QR code, but it's, it's a little, you know, it's a little buried. People look at graphics, they look at things that stand out to them. And so what I keep hearing is, I would still like something in the Spanish language, not just a QR code, which it's a start and I get that. But I, I want us to find an innovative way, and I don't know how to do that without making it so cumbersome for, for staff, but making sure that we have that option for folks, whether it's something that you sign up for, if you want the Spanish version. I, I don't know how, how best to do that. But what I've heard is that they still want something tangible that's already in their language. So that way they don't have to, you know, go through all these different, these different methods to be able to get it. So those are the, the three things. But I think the biggest one is just that collaboration piece, meeting people where they are. Because I'll tell you, from a working community relations at, in the healthcare field, that's what we try to do because people hate having to go to five different places to get, get resources. Because then they have to tell their same story over and over again, share the same information, and that's the biggest hurdle that we have when it comes to outreach in the nonprofit level. So it's the same thing for the community level. So I would just encourage us to try to figure out ways to do more of that with some of our partners that we already have in our city. Thank you, Mayor.
And in terms of collaboration with our school district, because I do believe that's important, I know that in the summer months, when the teachers are gearing up to get ready for school and doing their planning, they're meeting with their librarians to say, what resources do we need? What books do you recommend based on these topics? And given that we're about to have a change at the library, is this an opportunity to see if our librarian can work with the other schools' librarians and the teachers in terms of this planning process to ensure that we have similar resources available for these kids after school, after hours and on the weekends and times when, you know, they need to be able to go and use those things that they're not necessarily going to have at home or they're not necessarily going to be able to get, you know, on the internet, you know, with the new STEM opportunities we have there. You know, how can we collaborate more? You know, when we talk about having opportunities for tweens and the kids that are looking for something to do, you know, how could this be an outlet to where it's an opportunity for additional education and to, to provide that, to show, look, we know what's going on in our schools, we know what they're working on, and we have additional resources to help you because, you know, the library at a school closes fifteen minutes after the building closes, you either get it at lunch, you get it before, you get fifteen minutes. So it's very brief. And if they know that they could walk right down the street to our library and have similar opportunities to, to further themselves, learn more and enhance that, I think that would be a huge win in terms of that collaboration. And, you know, just something that maybe we need to talk with the, the library staff about and potentially talk with the school district about too in terms of what that might look like and if they feel that is something that could be successful. Councilmember, just go.
Yes. Thinking about everything that's been discussed already, I think there's so many wonderful things going on in our city, and I think the overarching issue or concern is communicating that message. And I just, an idea, I don't like to do surveys, you know, unnecessarily, we've got this one that we're just discussing, but I was wondering if it's possible, Jeff, that we could do some sort of a survey of our citizenry? What is their preferred means of communication and being informed? Because we've got different generations of people. You know, the younger folks, they grew up on these, you know, they don't want to look at paper. We've got the older folks, they want paper. You know, that's kind of a generality. And in real estate, this is something we talk about all the time, what's the best way to communicate with a diverse clientele? We've got millennials, we've got people over eighty that are buying and selling property and moving and downsizing. Some want email, some never want email, et cetera, et cetera. And I think we've got to try to develop a multi-pronged capability to touch people how they want to be touched. And, you know, I could imagine we could have some kind of a, a connected device like at the, at the rec center, for example, you know, where people can come in, they're going to play basketball, do some work. I go, oh, I'm just going to pop this and maybe a quick little video, you know, one minute, something going on in the city or something going on at the rec center or in the parks or something like that. But I think we've just got to be innovative and try to find a multi-pronged approach to communicate because I get frustrated, and I haven't been on council all that long, but I would meet people and they go, well, I didn't know that, well, I didn't know that. And I say, well, don't you get your utility bill? And, you know, and just, we just got to stretch ourselves to find a better way to touch people because, you know, we've got wonderful things going on, wonderful things planned, that's why we're here for this year and the future. But we're not touching everybody and we're not communicating that because I'm just astounded all the time, just in casual conversations here and there, people go, well, I didn't know that, well, I didn't know that, but when did that happen? And so, those are my comments.
Just one, now just to add, I have an interesting situation in District Five, because in the water bill, of the notification, 155 homes in the Oak Brook, uh, townhome are on a single water system, so they don't get that message. And so we are looking at working with their property management to get them the notification, so they can send it out. So this idea that, you know, all our residents are getting it in their, uh, utility bill is not always accurate. So I just wanted to add that little nuance. It's 155 folks that live a rocks throw from my, my own home. And so I get this, well, we didn't know about that. And we have to figure out how we can overcome those, those obstacles.
And I would think the, the better property management companies, they want to be proactive.
Sure.
And informed, and keep their clientele happy and their residents happy.
And in talking with them, it was sort of an aha. It was an aha moment, that they didn't figure out that they could make those two connections. And so we're working on addressing that. Thank you.
Gary, do you have anything?
I have.
That's it.
Cool. All right. Well, then with that, move on to A3, uh, critical business outcomes.
All right. Critical business outcomes, just kind of a refresher. It all starts with mission and vision. Mission is to build a vibrant, dynamic community that consistently seeks to improve the quality of life for our residents. Our vision is to be a, a city of the future with a vibrant, diverse economy that supports beautiful parks, great amenities, and friendly neighborhoods. You have probably seen our strategy map. Across the top, our focus, future leaning initiatives, connected neighborhoods, community engagement, high performance, sustainability, branding and art. Then our business case, and then our critical business outcomes. This year, we have nine, that, with a total of 160 strategic initiatives as a result of those nine. Ensure strategic planning alignment to the current status of the city and mission and vision. Improve options for responsible and diverse housing, we spent a lot of time talking about that. Identify and implement a solution for managing drainage and retention. Mark Bentley has, uh, been working tirelessly, I think, on creeks and working with the Bella Lane extension to kind of help with some of those things. Plan for, build, plan for, build and maintain high-quality public assets. There's been quite a bit of investment in the assets that we do have. Support the evolution of the arts and culture in Farmers Branch, we're seeing more and more. And as I mentioned, you'll start seeing something over the next five years over on our west side. Strategically identify and acquire property to further the goals of the city. We have a target neighborhood, we've acquired 16 properties in that area. Execute sustainability initiatives. We just, the last council meeting, I think you saw the playbook for sustainability. Implement recommendations from the I-35 corridor study. Those are baked into our CBOs this year. And improve overall and targeted community engagement. I think the National Community Survey was, I think that was a better tool than what we were using. We've learned a lot from it, and there's more steps that can be as a result of that. So the first one, assure strategic planning alignment to the city and vision. So as a, just as a reminder, this is what we came up from last August at the budget retreat. So these are updates on what we're doing from those goals. The east side plan, the central area plan, the west side plan are all being looked at as part of the comp plan. We have a ton of plans. We have a stationary plan, a 35 corridor vision, uh, the betterments plan, the parks and recreation, the open space plan, sustainability plan, the trail master place, uh, trail master plan. What we're hoping with the comp plan is that these will all kind of be chapters within that. They'll all speak together, because right now, they're all separate plans. The comp plan, which, you know, it's an expensive undertaking, as you know. I think this is going to really help all of these things speak to each other and, and have more engagement from our community. Options for diverse and responsible housing. We are continuing with the Neighborhood Renaissance program. Neighborhood Renaissance is where we go out and buy a house and tear it down. Demo rebuild is where someone else either has a house or buys a house and tear it down, and we give them an incentive to build something new. Our multifamily policy was, was recently updated. And, uh, the targeted neighborhood, as I mentioned earlier, we're now working with Builders of Hope on, on five projects. Identify and implement a solution for managing drainage and retention. We've approved a drainage manual, which we did not necessarily have before. Every year, we have been investing in, in I and I repairs, and that is, it's hard to predict what that's been saving us, but I think after the first year, we thought, we thought it was around $600,000. That's substantial. Uh, Farmers Branch Creek channel improvements, we're continuing to work on those reaches. We're in one right now. I think I, I had a call from a resident, I'm sure you did too, yesterday. Uh, we're continuing to do those improvements on the reach. And that's a continuing, things change. You know, as you do things, that causes something else as a reaction. And so we're, we're having to go back and look at that. Uh, creek dredging, we'll start back up. We have Mallon Park and Rawhide by the library that are, that are, it doesn't seem like it was that long ago, but it's been, what, six years? It's, it's time to dredge again. Uh, the Freeze and Nichols Study for, uh, Brookhaven College, excuse me, Brookhaven Country Club detention. Every year, when we get torrential downpours, we continue to have certain parts of our neighborhoods that get flooded. And it's kind of like, hey, it's, it's Brookhaven Country Club, that's not us, but they're our residents. And at some point, we need to figure out what the plan is, and we have a partnership with Brookhaven, and what we're going in together on this study, with the understanding, it's going to tell us things. If it tells the city there's something we need to do, we're going to, at the best of our ability, act on it. And we're trusting that you will too. And we suspect there's a lot of things, Councilman Lynn and I think Councilman Merritt both have driven the entire, the entirety of the course and looking at where the drainage problems are coming from. So we, we kind of know that, but what do we do? Because when, the first things that we came up with, you know, Mark was quick to point out, well, if you did that, it's going to cause these other things, and there's residents that aren't impacted that will be. And you're going to cause them a problem trying to, so we really need a more comprehensive program. And then the Bella Road detention, and that's going to, I think that, that plan is going through the approvals now. We'll see that here shortly. Plan for, build and maintain high-quality public assets. We've completed the support center, uh, we're, new fire station two, which we're in today, recreation phase one and library. Ben, well, here's what's planned, the justice center, we talked about some of that earlier. Uh, the signature park, recreation phase two, and the branch connection. There's a, a really cool, uh, concept that's underway for the branch connection to kind of really completely reimagine that. And it's, it's impressive. That's coming to, uh, to a council meeting near you soon. Uh, support the evolution of the arts and culture in Farmers Branch. We have, uh, the sculpture up in the stationary, the love locks up in the grove, uh, the Firehouse Theater mural, our entry monuments, we consider public art. The West Side Art Trail is underway. The TIF extension will provide a funding mechanism for public art. The betterments have an opportunity for art, plus it's just going to look so much better. Uh, the cultural arts district, I think our art and culture committee reported to you that they are, they've identified the boundaries, and now they're trying to look at signage, awayfinding and so forth. And that we're working on a mural policy, which may be, it may start small and build, we'll see. Identify and acquire property to further the goals. Stationery has been a target. Uh, as you know, we're, we're in negotiations with the master developer. We're continuing to attract, to acquire residential assets. Mercer Park is a possibility. We've at least negotiated with the developer for a little over five acres for that. And then the I-35 corridor, um, with the new, the tip that we have, and the, the new tip that we formed will provide some dollars over time to help us acquire some strategic properties. Sustainability initiatives. Ben, I might let you do this one. This was, this was, uh, fairly new, and it's, uh, certainly one of your, your areas, and there's a lot of exciting information here.
Oh, on the spot, okay.
Showtime.
Lot going on with sustainability. You can see, part of the sustainability's leverage is, first of all, they have a wonderful committee appointed by council to give them feedback and guidance. They now have a plan which serves as kind of their sounding board and foundation for initiatives. But the biggest thing with sustainability is.
They're enthusiastic about finding opportunities to fund initiatives that wouldn't exist otherwise. So you're going to see constant grants coming through for sustainability, because they're always going to be going through grants. And so you see the CECO grants, I don't know what that acronym is for.
That's why I was calling on you.
I was like.
I just saw this slide, I don't know what that means.
But, and they're managing the projects really well. So on the solar panel installation, they came in under, and that's a grant-funded initiative as well. There's some credits in there, they were able to leverage that and do even more. And so you have more solar panels, the library added additional solar panels. So we're pivoting in, in coordination with the renovation. EV chargers, so right now, we're building the infrastructure. It's great to say, hey, we want to be a sustainable city going forward. What does it mean to have electric vehicles? Well, it's a chicken and egg conversation, right? And so you have to have the infrastructure before you can have the vehicles. But for council, we have to have chargers that we can report back to you, and you can have those discussions about how are we using the chargers? How much electricity are we using there? And it's fantastic, because I go to the library quite often, you see cars plugged in there all the time. That's, that's what you want to see, right? You're starting to see the market shift and move. But we have to have a strategy. And what's great about sustainability, they don't make these on their own. You're going to hear a little bit later about smart water heaters as well. They're guides that help other departments, because a lot of our initiatives should be smart and sustainable. But we're doing LED lights, that's leading facilities in that area. So they're working together on that. And they worked on a grant as well that helps leverage the cost for some of our renovation projects. And so you're starting to see more and more information. Again, it's going to be data-driven, though. We don't just do sustainability for the sake of sustainability. And the big one is yesterday, there's a proposal for a sol, a big solar array on the west side over there, George Bush and Valley, where the landfill area is. That's being interviewed, they interviewed with sustainability yesterday. We hope to have that back to council in the near future for you all to consider. So lots of big projects, lots of big ideas, but they come with solutions for implementation. So that's the big thing with sustainability. Because it's easy to say, hey, we're going to put this much money in there, make it happen. They're like, how can we give a strategy to leverage this for the next 10, 20 years? And also, how can we show how this is a cost benefit for our residents as well? So not only is it a good thing to do for the environment, a great example is there's potentially a landfill that escalate, an opportunity to escalate the landfill mulching conversation, which we're really excited about. So they're always thinking about that, because that's a priority of council, does a couple of great things. Mulching's great for the environment, it extends the life of the landfill. And that may help to generate some energy behind that initiative, so we definitely appreciate that support as well. But it's that continuous journey towards sustainability, and they're on a really good path right now. We're really excited for the stuff that's happening and going to be talked about in the near future with the policy group in front of us. So.
Thank you.
John.
CECO.
CECO is State Energy Conservation Office.
You went to the Texas office.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leave Google safe.
Very well, anytime.
They have a lot of acronyms.
Uh, implement the 35 corridor recommendations. So we've already changed zoning. We now have funding with TIF four. We're extending the stationary west of 35. And we're continuing to acquire property and hopefully selling some. We're also in that business, so we're looking to hopefully sell some for development. And then number nine, improve overall and targeted community engagement. We're, we have an enhanced website, we have an internal group that's working to try to make that more user-friendly. Uh, working to increase the distribution of the branch bulletin. FBTX Connect has been a great tool for us. As more and more people are using that, and we're understanding it better, and it continues to evolve, we're, we're starting to see, uh, better ways for us to, to share that information. The way it comes is in, in always the way we would perceive an issue. But in the mind of a citizen, this is where I go for that. So we're making sure that some of those lines are, are, are connecting quicker. National Night Out continues to be a successful event. Farmers Branch Night Out is kind of our all-district-wide, uh, town hall meeting. And then instructional videos, I know Jeff and his team are working on some instructional videos for different things from different departments to try to help people understand, uh, where to put your recycling cart, things like that, some, maybe some code enforcement things. So those are, those are our updates on the existing CBOs. Now, at the end of the day, we're going to say, based on what you heard today, let's start, it's time to start putting the next budget together already. We really want to hear from you on what are some new CBOs? Do we, are, what are ones we want to keep? Or there are some that you feel like, okay, we're, we finished, or we want to expand on that? And that's how we're going to end our, end the day.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's correct, but I mean, as you think about it, right now, um, you know, some of these points, we're going to have more conversations on later today. Uh, I think some of these kind of overlap. I know CBO number one, um, you know, we're going to, we have a full item dedicated to that later this afternoon. Uh, two, three, both seem to be running very well, uh, in, in my opinion. There are still things that are definitely important, uh, to the city. And as we plan going forward, uh, you know, four, when we talk about public assets. You know, I think, right now, all that we have going on, all that we've completed in the past few years, we are definitely focused on making sure that, uh, our public assets are of the highest quality. And how are we enhancing those to move some of these facilities into the, you know, hopefully, I'm not going to say the 21st century, but, you know, the next decade or, or two worth of usability and functionality. But, you know, we talk about number five, arts and culture. You know, I think that they're doing well. I think there's opportunities to, um, once we look at that TIF funding and can allocate money and give them a little bit more direction to go and, and accomplish a little bit more. I think we're going to see more of that through our city. But, you know, I think we're also going to have some policy discussions, um, here in the next month or two that can give them a little bit more room to go and tackle some of these projects, especially some of the things that we talked about earlier today. You know, number six, uh, when we're talking about acquiring properties, you know, I know there's been some conversation around, you know, we've done a very good job over the last, you know, 10, 15 years, acquiring residential property. Um, we've acquired vacant land, uh, through some very strategic partnerships, um, both with vendors that work very closely with our city, with our school district, to help our stationary out. But should we spend a little bit more time and energy as we're looking at our east side, as we're looking at the corridor and with the new plan stretching all the way to Val Wood? Uh, there are a lot of assets there too, to what can we do to, you know, is it less shift on some of the housing stock as well, and more into some of the commercial assets that we might need to reposition? You know, what does that look like in terms of a council approach? Uh, in terms of how we want to allocate those dollars to where it's not just one issue? What's going to make a, a bigger impact? And I know that you acquire the, the more expensive buildings, and you put even more expensive buildings back. It seems to move the base along a lot further than just one house at a time, uh, in my opinion. And so what is the collaborative effort to accomplish goals in two key areas of the city as well as, as we look to revitalize the housing stock here as well in a very responsible manner? You know, with, with seven, and our, our goals to be more sustainable. You know, I love the, the plan that came forward, uh, at our last meeting. I know we're going to take a strong look at that plan and, you know, taking action to, to put that into place. But, you know, in terms of the three kind of key priorities that they've kind of set out to embark on upfront, I think there's opportunities for us as council to assist them with that, because there's a lot of policy measures that need to be taken into account as well. And, and that sits at this table. Uh, and how can we push some of those things through? So it's not, we're worried about these three things first. It's how can we take some of these other aspects of the plan off their plate that they're looking to have implemented? And move that forward for them, so that they have other opportunities, uh, and, and more leeway in the future to, to move things forward. And, you know, as terms of number eight, you know, we'll be talking, uh, some more about the corridor study, uh, as well, as that kind of relates, uh, with the comprehensive plan, as it relates to, uh, some of the other discussion points. But I know that's something to focus. And then, we just had a very lengthy conversation on the communication. I mean, I think a lot of these things are centered around issues that we've all held close. But as, as John pointed to, what are the opportunities for us to, if any, combine some of these and make room for new opportunities that we want to focus on? But we need to be mindful of, how much can be done? And, and what needs to be the true focus? Because I mean, if we have 15 objectives. This goes back to that point of, how are things done with more people selecting excellent? Rather than just good. Um, and so what are the true areas of focus that people can, or ideas that we can add to this, but still get it done in a way that meets, meets that level and meets that benchmark? And so before we move on, you know, I kind of want to have a brief discussion upfront about some of these, so we can get a, get a sense of where everyone is. And I think as we have the rest of our discussion today, will allow us to come back and reframe and prioritize these things at the end of the day for our true CBOs that will be the guidepost of how we move through this budget process coming up and through the next year as well. So, um, those are kind of my thoughts on, on some of those. But definitely open to hearing where y'all stand on some of these as well. Councilmember Lynn.
So in listening to the report, uh, with respect to, um, CBO number two, I'm just going to go down the line and give some thoughts here, if you would. Demo rebuild is mentioned in that. We do need to adjust the incentives, I believe that we do, because of, uh, the increase in, uh, appraised value of property. I'm not sure that the, the thresholds that we have for the various incentives are still relevant. We also need to be very careful when talking about, uh, target neighborhoods and the use of attainable versus affordable housing or low-income housing, and make sure that that is defined. And I think the meeting on, uh, Saturday helped to define that. The other thing I would add to that is I had a note of more pocket parks to change the face of problem properties. If you think about, and I hate to single out, uh, particular residents, but, um, even at the northwest, northeast corner of Valley View, excuse me, of Valley View and Webb Chapel, northeast corner. There was a house there, it was in very poor condition. It's catty corner from the pocket park. Flipper came in, fixed it up somewhat, and they probably put it on the market. Would have been a great. Would have been a great opportunity to try to get that and just rid that because that's a difficult corner anyway to have a, a single family residence on. With respect to CBO number six, again, that still plays to the demo rebuild incentives as I mentioned earlier and adjusting those incentives. Number seven, with respect to sustainability, it's great that we're doing all this, but where is our report on the savings and metrics back to the residents? I was thinking in my mind, okay, we should have, we made a big deal about telling people we spent a million, too, on installing solar to make the city more efficient. But how do we know how much money that saved us? And so I was thinking of creating some type of, like a thermometer or a wheel or something that shows the growing savings over the years as it relates to the installation of the, of the project itself, of the capital expense. So we can show people that we're actually trying to save money. And then on number nine, obviously, this is, I don't see anything, it's going to be a topic that doesn't go away because you're going to continually look for better ways to improve your communication with residents and figure out that magic key to engaging with them. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anyone else have any comments at this time?
I just want to add, and not to go back to the communications piece, but one thing that was included is the Farmers Branch Night Out. And I would like, and I know Tracy, you and I have talked about this, really having our council more involved in those because I think there should be a blanket informational concepts that we have done in the past with projects. But I think there needs to be a subset, you know, time set aside for us to be able to share certain things that are very specific to what we know our constituents have asked to, to learn about and know more about because we hear from them all the time. And so having more of a, an opportunity to have a true town hall of sorts to talk about some of these things, I think is really important, not only to share the big projects that are going on, which I think are important, but also have the opportunity to talk about, you know, in, in my district in particular, and I know it's in others, like things like, you know, the speed bumps and, and how to do that and things like the, the, you know, the senior, the senior repair program and some of these things that, that we know people are shocked that even exists and they want to know more about. So that's one that I think we could use it, and it can be a very good opportunity in communications to make sure that we share things that are, that may be a little more specific to our area, but also get feedback because it's really hard to do that through like a walkthrough. And also, I will say for, for my district, I know we had the lowest turnout, but I think it has to do with, you know, really having us talk about, well, what's the best location for something like that? And so, so anyhow, that's one thing that I did want to make sure to point out because I know I've talked to a few colleagues about it already. As far as the, the rest of the critical business outcomes, you know, we'll, we'll dive into it more a little bit later. But one of the things I do want us to really think about is how to leverage our regional relationships as it relates to arts and culture. I've talked to a few folks and, and you know, they, they have some great relationships, but really how do we leverage opportunities through cultural centers and big arts entities within the region to bring some of those opportunities here to Farmers Branch? You know, we have a sculptor, a sculpture at Liberty Plaza where DMA is going to have, wants to come to Farmers Branch to do a demo, and we're working on, I'm working on that with one of our commissioners. So those are the types of opportunities I think we need to really leverage as we really, if we really want to make this, you know, heartbeat of arts concept really come alive. So, so Mayor, those are the only two things. I know we'll dive into some of the other things a little later, but just wanted to make, share those, those points with, with you all.
Councilmember Williams?
I'm really excited for us to, to take the, the time and invest the dollars in a comprehensive plan. I will tell you, when I was, since we were talking about National Night Out, this was given to me for that, and this was a, this was a great tool. If we could have something like this, when we look at our comprehensive plan, just a high level, hey, this is, this is what we're, even if it's just a yearly update of this where we're at in our comprehensive plan, so that we have this, because I've, I've pulled this thing out, I keep it in my, in my briefcase because I've pulled it out several times when, when people are talking about, well, what is going on? And so, you know, having, having something that's easily digestible with some great graphics like that, I think is, is great. And then that way that, that just sits always in, you know, in our minds and in our conversations of how we're pushing that comprehensive plan forward. So I would just encourage more things like this because I really liked it.
I would second your motion. That's a great idea. And people do like that kind of a thing because it's brief and it's visual, but then, you know, you've got some, some facts and figures in there as well. And it's hard for us, you know, to spontaneously have all of that in our head when we encounter people, you know, throughout the day, throughout the weeks.
And even when it comes to budget, like the, the thing that Sher, that Sherrell shared with us on breaking that down, like those types of things are so easy for us to be able to just share.
Yep.
So thank you. But I think not just with strategic plan, but other things like the budget would be another one where just little graphics that we could share, that we can post, I think are so valuable just to be able to, you know, just go ahead and say, oh, I have a graphic that will share that with you right away. And so I think it's, I agree with you. I think having more of those really helps us to, to, as, as council, to really share the information.
Well, I mean, to that.
Do you have specific stats that you find yourself answering questions about more often than not? Let me know. We can either make it into a nice format, you know, it won't be the dollar, but you know, I'm thinking about like the ways that, or some of those slides that we present during the budget process that show, okay, this is the whole budget and this much is capital and that is just, you know, so we can prepare some of those things in a one page or one shooter that allows.
That was one of my most highly viewed posts was the dollar.
Sure.
You like the dollar?
They, they, and so that's a thing, even speaking to, to Mr. Brady's point about not having, you know, having all of us have all of these, these newsletters and all of this redundancy, maybe, maybe the, the, the subject is, hey, you know, why don't you send me a really great graphic in an easily shareable form on social media? You know, they, those dimensions are pretty readily available and, and the, and the key points. And then that way, that way we can just share those things because I will tell you, that's, that's where most of my communication with citizens happens, is with social media, Instagram, Facebook. Somebody asked me the other day if I do a TikTok. I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I prepared that.
There's some work in progress.
I have to think about that.
Working on your shuffle.
It's a feature voters type of thing.
There you go.
But I want to, I want to commend Sherrell in conversations that we had earlier, the ideas of the presentation of the dollar. And then the other slide that you and I talked about, Sherrell, was where we had all the fund balances and understanding how the distribution. We show it sometimes in the pie chart, but I thought that fund balance graphic that had each of the funds and the major elements underneath those funds, again, it's that one page, I can get a sense of the size, the dollars, the components of those. Those are the elements that the, you know, residents really gravitate to, that it's easily understandable on how wide a breadth of operations that we have. So I want to commend you on those type of things and sharing those. And I think that just adds to the kind of the one bit graphic, if you will, that we have opportunities to share. And I think this all rolls back into the quarterly managers' report as well. And I know I've had conversations and we're going to talk about performance, but it's, it's all about, that falls into this as well, telling a good story, getting status on what CBO elements are, where we are in our capital improvement projects, and we do, we have all of that, but let's look at trying to get it down from 14 pages to maybe five or where we have, if you want more detail, click this link and then we'll give you pages, you know, six through, you know, 600, if you will, if you wanted to go that far. I think there are opportunities for that, and that falls into this communication as well.
I think that's a great segue into A4.
I was going to give one other piece of feedback. Love the feedback on the city manager's report. It's our, it's Charles' report directed at you all. We publish it on the website, but we don't push it out. So that's a great opportunity because it does have the financial updates, it does have the CIP update. It's kind of a snapshot of the city as a whole. So it's a wonderful tool, but it's been in the same format for a little bit. So if there's a way we can improve it, we would love to make it a better tool for you all to have those conversations with our residents. Farmers Branch Night Out was mentioned. I was reminded earlier this morning that that time is coming up, and so we'll be reaching out to you all on the upcoming agenda to help us craft this event for you all. Love this event. It's about celebrating the city and everything that's going on. So we'll be reaching out on a future council agenda to have that, in the near future of the council agenda to have that conversation.
And it's going to help that we're kind of moving past the COVID restrictions that we had the year, last year and the year before. Because that, that kind of flavored that conversation. Because what, what you're talking about, we, three years ago, we actually had where we'd have like, I keep on thinking, one of my favorites was John Norwood's at the gazebo at the historic park where he had just a really small gathering of folks, and he told them, here's what's going on with the city. And there was really a free flow of information. So that's, we're hoping to get back to that.
Yes, that was very good.
You remember that?
Yes.
We always incentivize with something, bring people out, like the kids love the ice cream. There's the popsicles. We always say, oh, let's have a good time.
I want corny dogs. Oh, I'm never here. I'm not here. Never mind. I'm gone.
You still have corny dogs.
You can still eat the corny dogs that we offer up going forward.
No, I'm off.
Wes comment. Just had one comment. On the National Night Out, I would very much like us to expand the hours of the window of National Night Out because I, I think my colleagues might have the same opinion, but I find it's almost an impossible task to race around and deal with, you know, traffic and parking and getting out and walking and saying hi and meeting, seeing some people you know and seeing lots of folks you don't know in 15 minutes and try to race back to your car to go to the next place. And I heard that also from residents, like, well, can't you stay and have a bite to eat? And I go, no, I've got to go to like six more places, you know, in two hours. And, and if we can expand the, the window for that, and I know some people, you know, had more elaborate things going on. Square Park was terrific. I went there very early on, but then, you know, I couldn't stay and kind of enjoy it and meet more people than I did in the 15 minutes I was there because I had to, you know, race somewhere else. And some folks, you know, had their parties, if you will, kind of went a little bit longer. But I think it's a great concept and it's, it's, you know, going to the people and getting to know our residents and our neighborhoods better. And, you know, I met people in that, in that evening that had lived here like one year, you know, came here from Chicago, loved it, you know, started a family, and then people that I've known for, you know, 10 or 15 years. And it's great that, you know, fire police and all the different departments participate in that. But my takeaway was from a lot of folks, oh, well, can't you hang around a little bit longer? So I'd like to just kind of expand that window.
I think to, to National Night Out, which is the first Tuesday in October historically, you know, that, those are individual parties set by that neighborhood. And I think what you also have is that time of year, you don't have as much daylight, so the parties are going as long. People have kids, they want to get them home. So, you know, us, we can extend the hours all night, but the neighborhood and the home that's holding that party might say, well, we're closing at eight, and it is what it is. So, I mean, it's, it's a conversation, but it's hard because it's, it's the neighborhoods that need to ultimately make those decisions on, on that one, I think. That's the challenge.
It should be flexible, but I've had the impression a lot of people thought, well, it's like six to eight, and it's six to eight, you know, you, you close the door and...
Well, if you read through the chart, because I'm bouncing around the whole city, you know, that's, you have some starting at 5:30, some starting at 6:30, some starting at 6:00, some going to 8:00. I've been to parties that have lasted until 11:00, you know? And then next time, we'll, we'll call you and say, hey, there's still one going.
So I think to your point, I agree. I ran like a devil of B and C from point to point, and it's, it's important to show up, but I think going, we'll go back to communication. The thing that I did in that particular, I talked to each one of the organizers and ahead of the actual event and made sure that I visited with them, brought them materials. So it's communication. While I might not have been there at the beginning or at the, you know, the end of their particular event, I made a presence, we distributed, you know, flyers and, you know, my, the business cards from the city, but the opportunity to be there. So if we look at expanding our communication as we talked about, I think when we hit that time in October, we'll have more in our toolbox to communicate with them and make that a better experience overall. But that's just what I wanted to add.
And kind of the, the, kind of the counter to that, Michael, is Farmers Branch Night Out was kind of started because of that, where it's, National Night Out is a police event, right? It's community, get together, know your neighbors, get outside. So Farmers Branch Night Out is kind of, you know, speaking of your goals, it's one location, and we're trying to get the residents to come there, so there is a longer time and the council member is there and the residents come there. It's not as attended as National Night Out, but it doesn't have the same history either. But that's kind of the, there was those observations before, and that was kind of like, okay, well, we'll do six months from that, let's do Farmers Branch Night Out where it's at one location and people come there so you can have longer, more meaningful conversations.
And I liked that program very much. And I was at the library, which was super well attended, you know, given the renovation and also sit at a different time of year, you know, it's a little more, a minimal of being out.
And I would just add, yeah. And I would just add that, you know, and that's a struggle with any city because imagine, you know, when I used to do that for, for my council member in Dallas, it's 150,000 people that he represents. So imagine all the different communities that, that they had. So it's a struggle for every city. You can't make all of them. You know, we have to prioritize based on who we know or what have you. But one thing that we did, and I'll, and I'll pitch it, is we leveraged our board and commissioners to share the information and go to some of those events on our behalf because you couldn't make everything. And so that's also a great way to engage them and say, oh, I'm, I'm here representing your, our council member, here's the information, because it's impossible, especially I feel like now more and more folks are becoming more engaged, so we're having more parties. I know we had more in District One this time, which was great. So I think we need to, you know, kind of see how we can leverage some of our maybe boards and commissions to help us with that. Because I agree with you, Michael, it's, it's a struggle to make every single one. But that may be finding innovative ways to do that. And, and I like your idea of, of reaching out and dropping off stuff ahead of time because it's hard to do that the same day. But just wanted to throw that out there because I know it works, and it works in other cities, and that's kind of how they do it, but...
I think that's a good idea also to try to empower and include and motivate our board and commission, you know, directors and as we, you know, talked about collaboration in our last board, board luncheon. And I think that would be really, really good, you know, because it could get buy-in and education on individual boards and commissions, whether it's arts or sustainability, but also get the broader city message out.
And the neighbors get to meet their commissioners and know who to go to too. So, thank you, Mayor.
We're going to go to A4, discuss city performance measures and objectives.
Do we need a break? It's been 90 minutes.
Mayor, Council, Ben Williamson, Assistant City Manager. We talked about performance measures today and looking forward to having an engaging conversation about how the City of Farmers Branch uses data. So, not going to read the case study to you as part of the packet and materials, but what the case study does highlight is there's different ways to talk about data. There's data for the sake of data and saying, hey, we have data. We all generate data. Every organization does. But it's showing, are you using that data to make decisions? So what I'm talking today about is the journey of Farmers Branch and our use of data to where we are now. And then look for your feedback on how you'd like to see us use data in the future. Is it, is it meeting your expectations? You know, the mayor talked earlier about, you know, what is excellence? And that's a great conversation. That's part of what we're going to talk about today, and I love that conversation. But theme of this one is, you have Nashville here talking about their use of data. They had data everywhere, but they weren't using it in a meaningful way. Once they did, all of a sudden you had this transformational conversation. And Chief Hale, I'm glad you're here today because a lot of my example slides are the police department, so that's going to be a fantastic part of this conversation. This is one slide I am going to read to you because I think this definition is critical importance. ICMA is the International City County Management Association. That's the governing body for city administration across the entire country and the world, essentially. So, "Performance management includes identifying, collecting, analyzing, and reporting on indicators that show how well the organization performs, both internally and in the delivery of services to the public, and how that performance compares with its targets or with peer organizations. More importantly, as a management tool, performance data is intended not as an end result, but rather as a means to more informed decision-making in a more engaged community." So we're tying all these concepts together that we talked about today, but we're going to remove the emotion and assumption from it. We're going to say, what's the data telling us? Let's put that in context. How do we create value for the City of Farmers Branch, for our residents, for our businesses, and for our colleagues and coworkers? So I wanted to start, share a little bit about the historical measures. So I wanted to start, show you a little bit about the historical measures. My first week here, I was visited by an employee and she goes, hey, congratulations. Welcome to the city. She handed me a foot tall stack of paperwork. Said, here's performance measures. Good luck. I think she had a little bit of a chuckle as she walked off. But you can kind of see, this is one of the piece of papers I was given. There wasn't any, anything to just, hey, here's how we've always reported data and that's gonna be the fire department. The next one I got was community services. Again, there's a lot of numbers here, but I'm trying to figure out what is the story that's being told? And then finally, you're gonna see the library. And so when you look at some of these measures, what you're looking at is, what is the data telling you? It doesn't provide any context. It doesn't give a story and tell you, what are we seeing here? Is this good? Is this bad? What is it? And I also want to show that that evolution also impacted the budgeting process. So Sheryl and her team have done a fantastic job using data. You're seeing more graphics, but they have their, a whole dashboard system that's got live data on the health of the budget as well and real-time data. So you look at this, this is an example of how we used to communicate data in the annual operating budget. Oh, I moved my slides around. Sorry about that. It didn't jump. But we'll get into a future one that shows you how we're using that data now to tell the story for the city. When you look at the principles of performance management, not going through every single one of these, but there's themes that start to emerge. It's gonna permeate the organization. It's gonna be relevant, understandable, provide for accountability. It's sustainable and it's transforming the organization. So how have we done as Farmers Branch? So this is important. So in 2017 into 2018, we created Performance FBTX. That's the city's live data dashboards that show how we're performing as an organization. They're aligned to ICMA standards. But when you look at this, in 2017, we weren't recognized for any form of this. 2018, we were there for distinction. Distinction is the lowest level of recognition that ICMA gives. It's still very difficult to get to. Followed, a layer above that is achievement and then the highest layer is excellence. For the last three years, we have been at the excellence level. And what's important about that one is if you look at this from a perspective of what that means when you compare to other cities and you want to brag about Farmers Branch and how well we do things and we put it on paper and we say, hey, this is how good we are. There's only one other city in the entire state of Texas that has a pattern as good as ours, and that's the City of Austin. With a budget 10 times as large as ours and a whole bunch more dedicated to this. We do this as a part of our culture. So the departments are responsible for managing their data and we work through that together. And you see the progression we have made, but when you look at, what are the categories for all this? ICMA, ICMA keeps raising the categories. It's not a static, hey, you've made it to performance excellence. They keep raising the bar. And so you'll see in the blue, they're starting to do more things and more measures that we have to have. For example, optional in 2021, required in 22, and that's gonna be analysis, equity and the provision of services, which is topics we've had at the neighborhood level. Are we looking at our neighborhoods through a data lens and making sure our service delivery is equitable? And so it's asking about those. We just had a national survey that showed us, hey, maybe there's a perceived inequity there. Because I know we're giving the service to all of our residents, but how do we communicate that value to our residents? And so part of this today will be arming you all with the tools to have those conversations to say, hey, because I wouldn't say that the service isn't excellent. I would say that perceived level isn't an excellence. Let's get there and show them, hey, this is how good these departments are at what they do. The way we approach measurement, it's easy to say, well, police responses. Four minutes is the goal, right? That's an amazing goal, but you don't know that unless you compare that. And so that's one of the things we're gonna show you is that when we look at these measures, one of our measures will be a performance level. And so that's how fast we're doing the job, how quickly the job gets done. But if you take that alone, that doesn't tell the whole story. The other measure we have is workload. How busy are we? So if all of a sudden police response times, let's just hypothetically say they're six minutes. They're not even close to that. Chief, y'all are doing a great job over there. But if their call volume has doubled, does that make sense? And so it's putting those in context together. So one measure helps identify why another measure is moving. So they go in comparison. The third part of that is not all calls are the same. Calls have different weights for police, fire. Permits have different times. It's really easy to do a fence. We got those to over the counter this year for the first time. So fantastic. But when we're talking about an apartment complex, that's a different standard. And so it's making sure we're putting all those standards together to present the complete picture to the public and to the council as well. What's great about a lot of these measures, some are considered leading measures, some are considered lagging measures. Workload measures tend to be leading measures because as the volume of permits come in, applications come in, we know times are going to increase. And so we can use that as a management tool to show, hey, maybe we should outsource some more of these permits. Or can we be proactive in our management stance as we see other measures start to creep up? So these are our three measurement types. So you can see how we organize our data. But having data and saying, hey, we're performing, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have permits out within six months. That's our goal. That's a really low bar, right? Would any of y'all, would your constituents feel about having a six month for a permit? That wouldn't go well. So let's talk about how we set those goals. And so they're comparable over time, but we're also comparable from city to city. I want you to be able to walk into a conference with other cities and say, hey, we're Farmers Branch. We do things at an excellence, world-class level on a daily basis and here's why. And here, we, we put it on the website because we believe in our data and the performance level we're at. It's a really well-run city guided by a great policy group with employees that don't believe in second best. Everybody in this room, they all are competitive and they want to be the best and they're aligned to do that. But the way we do it is we compare it to other cities. So we can say, hey, we're at that level. Here's where we're at. And also when you look at measurements, when we, when the departments define their measurements. So for example, right now, the planning team has, has a change with Sharupa there. She's helping us determine what her performance measures are and making sure we have the right measures under her leadership and coordination with Allison. But the general theme is a Christmas tree when I look at a department. It should be mostly green with splashes of yellow and red. Because if all of our performance measures are green, the bar is too low. And that's absolutely the truth. We should miss in certain instances. Part of the business case for this fire station was the response times. And I remember seeing Chief Parker talk to you and he's like, hey, my response times in this area of the city are low and here's part of the reason. I'm in a bad spot. No matter where I start, I'm already behind because of my travel time measure. And that was critical to communicate to you all. We knew we needed a new fire station. It was outdated. It was time, but where to put it? And this helped us generate, where should it go to best serve the residents and businesses of Farmers Branch? So when you look at the budget, you had a slide that kind of showed where it was. So that's the FY1516 budget on the left. On the right is currently how we're showing the same data measures, but with more information. So it's trending over time. And what does that look like? And what type of permits are we doing? So not only are you seeing these big numbers move, the budget's moving, it's a healthy budget, but it's also showing that to the service delivery. And many of these are tied to revenue streams such as the permits. We gotta make sure we get the permits processed. And this is an example of a performance measure. So what's great about this is, this is gonna be your police response time at the four-minute mark. There is nobody I'm aware of that has a four-minute goal as a response time. So it trends it over time. And you're gonna see little bits of movement back and forth on those measures as well. But what's great is every performance measure has a description. So when somebody looks at this, they understand why we're measuring this. What is this performance measure telling us? And some of these have very long definitions because there's a lot of context that needs to be there for the public to understand, what is this performance measure? Then it's gonna look at our current performance and it tries to look at the trend over time. What are we seeing? And so the aspirational goal of four minutes, which is one of the highest standards there is. And for context, you know, I'll use Dallas as an example. If you look at a priority one call, we don't prioritize calls in the City of Farmers Branch. You call for emergency services, they're coming. Now, there's different approaches depending on what the call is, but our goal is four minutes no matter what. If you call priority one call in Dallas, you're at least eight minutes, 12 seconds. So, and that's for the most serious of concerns. If you have a general concern, let's say a cat in a tree, we'll take that away from fire for a second and put it with police. You could be hours if not any response at all. And we've seen these stories in the news because it's a common concern. And this isn't a unique trend to just Dallas. The larger cities especially, they don't even talk about these kind of response times. They don't want to talk about Farmers Branch. And that's great because we want to talk about Farmers Branch, like, hey, here's where we're at. And the magic formula for that, I'll leave that to the police chief to tell you how the magic formula and how he makes that work. Because that's his leadership to get his team aligned to these goals. And it's a fantastic goal as well. And then you're gonna look at total calls for service. And so you're seeing a trend here. It's slowly creeping up. And what's great about this view is it compares month to last year's month, the same time, but you can see the view over time. As a city, this is how we're choosing to portray this data. We can slice this any way y'all would like to see it. So if you want us to put it overloaded with, on one, different axes and seeing different comparable places, that's what's great about data is we can look for correlations. But generally, just looking at it, we're looking at the workload. And one thing that's a noticeable trend, we are a growing city. I know the census had us at 35, 991. We all have a strong feeling we're significantly higher than that in some areas, definitely. But all of our workload measures indicate we're growing as well. So you're seeing this as well. The trend line on there is looking at the forecast for the future at calls for service. And this is a great tool because then Chief Hale can come in here to you as a policy group, working through his city manager, John Land, going, hey, there's gonna be a need for changes in the future. Hence the two additional offers and officers and the overstaffing model to make the overhire model. So we can get there and be prepared to serve our residents because we know the call volume's going up. We can do programs that help discourage crime and calls for service, but that's part of living in an urban area and having the access points we do. So it's how do we manage that? But it's also giving you all the data so you all can make informed decisions. And the final piece of context is, what types of calls are we getting? You know, you're hoping that you're not having the most serious calls there, but it helps you see the different calls that we're having by type. Online, it's interactive. So if you hover over one, it's gonna make the rest disappear. So it's much easier to consume the data. So that's the journey of Performance FBTX. And you'll see those measures throughout several departments if I can. I always try and do a performance measure, a workload measure, and then an informational measure to wrap it all in complete context. And then there's descriptions generated by the departments on how they want to tell their story. And police recently updated all their scorecards because they went to the National Incident Based Reporting System, another one of those large acronyms. But a lot of us don't speak police talk. So on the measures that use that, it explains what that reporting system is. And then at the top of every dashboard, if possible, we show who are our benchmarks? Is it an ICMA standard from across the country or is it a council standard, something you all have asked to see? So it lets you know where are we getting these standards from. So we start with saying, here's the dashboard, but here's the standard we're aligning to. And it's always at the highest possible standard that exists. Another update as part of this one is, we've talked previously about FBTX Connect and how that's impacting some of our front-facing departments. And what are the service level agreements? And so included in your packet this time around, you got to see the, the first swing at the service level agreements. These are only going to get better, but y'all can see how we're using FBTX Connect and what that looks like. And so I'm focused on code enforcement because I led the charge for us on this and you'll see some additional data on code enforcement. But as we continue to improve, do we have dashboards for all of this? Not yet, because we don't know if we need that data yet, but we know we want the service delivery level where it, where it is. And so it'll reflect in some of the other measures, which is how long it takes to resolve a case. So we have lots of performance measures that tie to this type of initiative, but it's not necessarily measuring these individual pieces. But we can, but we don't want to just measure data for the sake of data. What data do we need to have the right conversations? One thing that's always important to, and Councilman Williams, you were part of the code enforcement, Councilman Williams, part of the code enforcement task force. But it's one is, sometimes it's easy to look at where we are and not where we came from on code enforcement. So I wanted to give a little bit of credit to, because code enforcement was my first dashboard in the City of Farmers Branch. It was the first one we built to have that narrative and try and remove some of those emotions and assumptions from it. And so Leo loves to make flow charts. So I said, Leo, tell me what's changed since you've been here? And he's like, oh, Ben, there's so much. How many pages am I limited to? And so it was a fun conversation. But the theme though is, is, and this is part of the, the code enforcement task force helped us was, it could usually take about 30 days because there was first warning, there was second warning, then there was going through the legal processes to get something moved. So the average time to get a case before we reorganized with code enforcement was sometimes nearing 30 days. And that's just before it goes through the court system for final resolution. So you see trash on the curb. That's frightening, right? Now that's picked up within seven days no matter what, unless we have a mistake. They do happen, but they're not common. And so we look at where code enforcement went to. Now you can see the tiering and how they escalate. We give you one every 365 days. We've got a door hanger we now put out and you'll see them do this. They'll walk up, put a door hanger and say, hey, if you can take care of this within a certain number of time, this goes away. And that has been remarkably effective. And that was an idea of Charles that helped us really figure out how we can use code enforcement to move forward. They also have, instead of code enforcement just saying, what, you have a mistake and a violation, they also have a program that celebrates great-looking properties, right? And so it's both sides. We're managing the message on both sides, but you can see a clear escalation process. And what has happened is, we're seeing the trend time in court, code cases to resolve go further and further down. And so we're going in the right direction. It's getting better and better and better. A year ago, you were looking at almost 30 days for almost every code violation. Today, a lot are getting done within three days because of the door hangers and that proactive messaging. And the messaging is English Spanish. It's got a place for the code officer's card on it. It's all about that relationship with our residents and a lot of times they just don't know. And so we work to guide and educate our residents versus, hey, here's a notice of violation. Please correct this or you'll be in court. That's not the right message. That does sometimes have to happen, but we try not to go there unless we have to. And then the best part about this, the future's getting brighter. So right now I have to give credit to these scorecards to all my department heads. They manage their data. They manually enter their data. And so my goal is 15 minutes or less per month is all they should spend on their scorecards, but sometimes that's not the case. And we do have to annually refresh these and review these. So in the future, we're hoping to get to automated scorecards, to where we're having a balance of, real-time data on the website's a challenge because data without context doesn't tell the true story. If a fire engine takes 15 minutes to respond and it sends up a big red alert on the website, there's probably a really good reason, such as there was an accident, something happened, they got stuck behind traffic and they couldn't move, something happened. So that's why I like doing the look backs. What was our trend for the month? And it's kind of that 90th percentile rule. Where are we able to read our service level agreement 90% of the time? And that's how they're measured by their professional organization. So that's how we look at it. GIS integration, we have a wonderful GIS team that's really helping us push forward. But the missing context you saw between performance, informational and workload measures was that GIS overlay of, well, where is this happening? So that's a separate process at this time, but our goal is to wrap these all together. So then you can say, well, where is, where are the code enforcement violations? So I see them by type, but where are they by type? If I want to see high-weeding grass violations, I can go look at those. And that gives you a much more powerful tool because of course we'll set it up with district layering. So you can look at your district because code enforcement is always a hot topic, even with the improved processes. The other part is 100% scorecard adoption. We have internal service departments, we have external service departments. We're getting to a point to where we're close to having 100% dashboard scorecards for all departments. And in some cases for divisions within departments. For example, animal services is a division within sustainability and public health. But it's still a one for the public. That's an internal organizational structure. They want to see how we're doing as an animal shelter. And the other part is, as part of this year's budget, we do have a business intelligence data analyst position starting, which, that's a wonderful title saying, they're gonna help us do a lot of this. They're gonna help us connect a lot of these to where what is the future of our scorecards for Farmers Branch? So in conclusion, that's your performance management system. That's how it's been built. It's still growing. It's still improving. The measures are evaluated about every two years. I circle back to the leaderships in these departments and work on their measures. Or if there's a change in leadership, I said, hey, do these measures still make sense? And the other way we build measures is when council, when you have a common question you're asking the departments, especially a data-driven question, we like to build that into scorecards. So we like to be able to get that information to you in a way that's consumable and digestible. And you've probably noticed a theme, especially for some of my high tenure folks like Councilman Lynn, when the boards start, first started reporting to council, it was very general. And now you're seeing boards report with data and metrics. So the staff liaisons, the culture of the city is, we're teaching our boards how we use data to tell the story. And they're using that data to report back to you all as an advisory board and say, hey, are we meeting these standards and how we're getting there? A big example is the 94% release rate at the shelter. That is huge. 90% to be a live release shelter, they still want to be at 99 or 100%, and I know they'll find a way to get there. But it's showing those successes of, hey, here's the national standard to be a no-kill shelter, a live release shelter. We're at 94%. So we're already beyond that. We've been as high as 98. Unfortunately, there's times when there's certain things we can't control for the health and, you know, well-being of the animal that's gonna impact those numbers. But we can get in the high 90s and that's what we aspire for. So, Mayor, Council, that's, what would you like to know or discuss?
All right. Ben, thank you very much for your presentation. Councilmember Merritt, I'll let you go first.
Sure, thank you. Ben, thanks for the presentation. I, my focus as I, you know, earned this chair is to make sure we communicate all of this to our residents. And so we're back to communication. And I want to commend you on all the data that you're collecting. But I also want us as a group to understand, and you've alluded to it at a couple of points during the conversation today, that some of these key performance measures are derived at the budget timeframe. They're derived by the staff, you know, directors. And so understanding that they are constructed at those particular moments and then we're delivering those through these various dashboards, all the manual and automated processes. And how can we look for innovative, you know, ways to be more efficient in that reporting? But we want to make sure that we have the right information. So as getting this information to the public, whether you have to go to our website where we have a performance measurement, you know, page on our overall site, and I appreciate the detail that is provided there on descriptions. It's, it's overwhelming, lots of data. But I think perhaps where we could go as a council is, what are some of the key metrics that we want to shorten, if you would, to give an FAQ that this is, we're back to kind of the, you know, city managers' report. Here are the five, 10, and I'll be facetious for a minute, 55 most important numbers that we want you to see. We're collecting hundreds, if not thousands, of data points in the backend. She's not here, but my friend Pat would be interested in that detail at the, at the most granular level. But not everyone would be. And so we have to figure out how we get that detail, you know, in front of them. So I think from a council perspective, if we identify the five or 10 things that we're most interested in, you put that at the front end.
Absolutely.
And allow them to see that. And allow them to see that. Go to a department, here are the key things for that department. We list those out in our budget document. So those key performance measures are listed in the budget document. We're going to collect these five or these three for each one. We want to have those good descriptions, and they're there in the dashboard that you showed, yeah, on that pie slide there. You might want to look at a book called, by author Donna Wong, on how to present data. She was a, someone from the Wall Street Journal. That pie chart sucks, let's be honest. And so that has too much information to digest, even though you have the ability to go over and hover and get information, you want to look at that in a different way. You want to perhaps put that in a table in some other visualization tool. So I'll share the book with you, I have, I have a copy, I'll make sure you get it. But these are the kind of things that we need to do, both at the staff level and the council level, to understand how we, what's important to us, and what's important to our residents, and making sure they see it. We could determine, you know, a plethora of other, you know, metrics that we have. Wouldn't it be cool if we showed this or showed that? But what's important at the first level, and then what's at the second and third level down? So anyway, that's just my kind of, you know, overall perspective. We want to tell a good story, and sometimes we'll need to perhaps put a, and this might be a Jeff Brady, and I'll work, I could work with him and yourself, Ben, that we, how to read these performance charts? Let's talk about that and have that as an FAQ to allow somebody, you want to understand performance? Let's look at this. Two or three ways, we'll give you the two or three, four examples that you did today, how to read these charts and educate our populace on how to look at these numbers. And then that informs them to ask better questions, because that's what it's all about. Asking the right question and getting the right data to make a decision that is meaningful and impactful for as many people as possible. So, I'm off my soapbox, but I love, I work at this every day. This is my, this is my bread and butter in my real job.
Absolutely.
And so this is where we could show too much data, we need to perhaps roll it up, give them a number, and then there's more numbers behind that to support that. So anyway, that's my two cents.
Councilmember Lynn?
If I can. I just want to make sure, as a marketer, I understand what you're saying. We need all this data. We as managers of the city need this data, so we can make good decisions. But from the public perspective, people are so accustomed to getting information in sound bites, bullet points, whatever, that we really have to try to scale back all the minutia, if you will, and that voluminous amount of data to just, here's some, two, three quick bullet points, whatever, that we can pull out for each particular item that we're looking at to communicate, to be able to speak to. Because when you start talking about this, if you were at a town hall meeting, blah, 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 you know, people's eyes are going to roll back and whatnot. We need to be able to convey the bullet points quickly, concisely, and in terms that they understand. That's it, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lynn. Mayor had to step out. Tracy, do you have anything?
I don't. I love data, and I love that y'all track the way that you do with your, with the dashboards. I think that's, I think that's brilliant. I mean, I agree with Councilmember Lynn. I think when, when we show this kind of information, I love the fact that you've got the three, you know, your workload, measured description, performance, and analysis, because it does, it does speak to that. And maybe that's something that we can include in, you know, when we were talking about maybe a yearly, instead of just being the strategic, but, but using that information just, you know, at the bottom, when we're, when we're talking about our comprehensive plan and what our performances are on those CDs. If we can, if we can include that together, I think, I think that that's great. Because there are those of us like, like David and I, who like our pie chart, charts, and we, you know, we like to see the, especially, not especially the pie chart, but I like this one particularly, where we can look at month to month. So I think that's brilliant. I love that. And that's, that's an easy graphic to look at and consume, so.
And from context, we have over 800 measures we track as an organization, so we tried to boil it down to some of the common.
That's all. I'm kidding.
I was like, just, yeah, so in each, each department or division that's portrayed up here has about five on average. The challenge where it starts to get lengthy is because it's which measures do we put up there? And we'll always ask council, what would you like to see? If you'd like to see different measures? And so we've even reduced them, because for example, Fire has a unique layout to where their response time is broken into three separate measures. And so there's the call time, the call-taking time, the turnout time, and the travel time. Well, in talking to Fire, only one of those measures can they impact, and that's going to be their turnout time. Travel time is what it is. The only thing they can affect as a management team is how quickly the firefighters, drivers, and captains move from the station to the apparatus and physically start moving. That's the only one they can control. Traffic is what it is. And then the dispatch time, that's on INTEC. INTEC does, provides us with a plethora of data in their own rights as well. But then at the end of the day, though, what our residents really care about, so there's the management lens we have, our residents truly only care about how long. And so when you look at the Fire dashboards, you remove those three and just focus on, how long does it take us to get here?
Right.
Because that's what the residents want to care. The other ones we have to address through our different lenses. If it's our turnout time, it's on Fire. If INTEC's having some dispatch times, we're going to work with INTEC. And if it's travel time, that's a tough one. We'll work with our other departments to see, is there any ways to improve these travel times? But that also bleeds into other subjects as well, right? Because what impacts the travel time to the apparatus? But as councils, you're looking through this, if you see different data sets you would like to see differently, or there's information your constituents are asking for, there's a lot more data out there, and we can definitely pull that forward. It's just what is, what does everyone want to see? Our most common traffic on these websites currently is other cities looking at our performance measures. And so I love that, it's like, come and look, it's great. But we can definitely change this, we can move to bar charts, it's, it's, there's all the different tools. It's a click of a button. Most likely would be best, though, is to probably consolidate some of the very small percentages into another category, because they have very, what kills it is those long definitions.
Put it in the table.
Put a table?
Put it in the table, they can read the table, you can see all the percent. You know, even if it's 0.01% of the overall, you want to show 100%. So, and you have, I don't know, maybe 20 different, you know, measures on this, you know, put it in the table, you can still read it and get the percentages of the overall. You're just displaying it differently, that's all.
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, just to tag on to that, number one, on the big picture, I mean, this has been said by a couple of colleagues here, you know, we need that information as much as we can get, in a way. Not too much, obviously, we can't digest it, but to make decisions and look at what's overall going on in the individual departments in the city. But at the same time, the challenge is, again, back to communication, how do we make that digestible to our citizenry? And, you know, I think if we can reduce things into just a few bullet points, that would be useful. But I think the tables are very good, because coming out of my background, you know, in banking and finance, I like to be able to look, oh, well, 1.5% goes to X, and 8.5% goes to that. I thought it was the other way around. And in a pie chart, I like pie charts, but it's more digestible to me, anyway, when having the tables there. And I do like to say, oh, 1% goes to this, and not just, you know, because you're saying, consolidate some of those into a bigger group. I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of that.
Okay.
And again, when someone wants to bore down into more details and information in a department or issue, they can have that capability to do that. I think should be our goal.
So Mayor and council, basically, you know, hearing that conversation, what I'd like to do then, the next evolution of the scorecard system is to create that intermediary step that doesn't currently exist, where there'd be the flash metrics that are kind of the front of the system that show the, hey, police response time is, and then if you click on it, you'll dive into a deeper look into those. So to create that landing step, that's if you want the bite-sized information, it's right there in front of you, provide it in a nice logical layout that makes sense, like maybe have a police car graphic that shows, hey, police response time is, because that's really what we know folks are looking for, but they want to know more, they click and it'll go into our public safety metric. Same thing for Fire and the other hot topics of the city. Would that be, you think that would help achieve?
Yeah, I think so. And I will, sorry, I was waiting to be last to comment, but one of the things, too, is in conjunction with that, I agree with everything that's been said. Luckily, we have Councilmember Merritt here that keeps us on check when it comes to data, because I think we're all data people. But I think having, because just having a metric doesn't make sense. I think comparing it, so like for the metric, and I had the same pie chart up on my, on my computer, comparing it to this one, like the green, yellow, red, right? Where do we compare for every single one? So folks know, compared to the entire region, for example, whatever we want to compare it to, or to the, to the, to the national standard, this is where we sit. So we can then say, at every level, oh, well, we're, we're ahead of the game when it comes to when you compare us with other cities or at the, at the national level, or you know what, we have, we have some, some work to do. So not just having, you know, just like the response time of however many, you know, minutes, but also comparing it to having some type of equal measure on how we compare, because that gives us the, the talking point, if you will, to be able to share that with, with the constituents. But I agree, I agree with, with Councilmember Merritt and my colleagues in that, there needs to be an easier way for external communications, but internal, you know, we, we obviously need the most information as possible to make the best decisions. So that's the only thing I would add. But thank you, I agree with you, Ben, I think that those two components, I think, will definitely help.
And I will be honest with you all, on comparing to other cities, I can, I can go out there and pick, and I use Dallas as an extreme example, because I know they have some very long response times. But what I can say is, the standards you all have, if y'all were to take these and put these against any city, they're going to be in the top 1%, 2% in the entire country. That's how good these metrics are. There's none that we're like, because this 240 being green, yellow, red, like I said, Dallas, you call for the most serious of emergency, you're at over eight minutes. The Farmers Branch has half that as a goal, and we're very close to it, and we're striving for that. And we're making continuous improvements to get back to that. So to me, that's, we can definitely pick some benchmark cities for there. So the way we got our benchmarking is ICMA has a whole list of all the cities across the country that participate, and we took the best measures they had. And unless we had an internal goal, which Chief Hill said, no, no, it's four minutes. And so absolutely, let's go for it. Let's be even better than the highest level that ICMA has, but all of our standards are already aligned to across the country, the highest possible. We can pick a couple of benchmark cities if we want to do that, but I will tell you, y'all are going to be in, it's a significant difference in a lot of areas, to be honest.
And we, and we've tried that before. We tried to, but the problem is, and this is a really excellent metric to look at, is because the cities around us, they all define what total response time, they define it differently.
Correct.
Like, like, you know, if the phone is ringing at your dispatcher, but the dispatcher hadn't picked it up yet, then they don't start, some of the cities don't start the clock ticking until the dispatcher picks it up. But I would argue that as long, if the phone is ringing for 10 minutes, that impacts the response, right? And so we, we were part of a project that was regional and, and of cities, and it was, oh my gosh, it was such a headache. Everybody had to try and come up with standardized definitions, and we ended up exiting in it because it was, it was such a headache. And yeah, we can cherry pick, we can say, we can put, throw Dallas up there and, but at some point, you start comparing apples with oranges, and we're trying to avoid that on some things.
Yeah, and I think it's just a matter of, we, we know what, what people gravitate to, right? And they want to know, what, what do we compare to? And maybe that's the narrative, and maybe we don't have something, and the narrative is, by the way, this is our, this is our metric chart, but just so you know, we already are above the standard in every single city in our region, or something to that nature.
I think what you do, Ben, and that might be the situation, is you consolidate, you know, our contiguous cities, or you have a basket of like-cities of our size, what have you. And that indicates its own line, and you can blend those together to show on average across the area.
I guess what I'm telling you is, there's not a regional way of tracking.
And there may not be.
Getting that, so that's, that's the problem.
And if that's the case, that's the case. And I know the, the IC.
ICMA.
ICMA. There's two Cs, it's county and city.
I know, but it's only IC, so they're the one in the acronym.
They're one in the acronym, that's exactly right. But, I mean, they give, they might give a benchmark, you know, I know they had 80-some-odd measures. I mean, if you even use a standard like that, you can at least compare to something.
Absolutely.
And that way, it's not a, and that's not a basket, you know, of other cities. You know, this is the national rate of their 600 or 6,000 contributors.
That is available.
And then that way, you can mark that, you know, up as well.
And also, there's national, like, I know that, I know on the Fire side, I'm current on the Police side, there's, there's like, their professional associations have national standards as to, you know, if you hit the 90 percentile, then you're.
And it's not something that we have to manage or create.
Correct.
Or, you know, you go to it and you pull into that.
Absolutely.
The other question I have is, if I may go back to that, is I know that there are a lot of other systems that we have that are providing information to these. We talked about the manual entry. And I know perhaps as we look at future step, and is to integrate some of that, obviously bringing on a business analyst to do some of that. Maybe there is a lot more automation that can come into play, and these systems can talk to each other. And I know in some situations, there, the interfaces don't talk to each other. I get that, and have seen that in the past. But I want to make sure that we're, you know, forward-looking in that particular space as well.
Absolutely. And that's a huge priority for us, but we couldn't do that before because the ERP process wasn't mature enough for these systems to communicate. And so there's a lot of technologies out there that produce much nicer dashboards. This is the manual entry one. But in the future leaning, because the ERP system has matured to a certain level, Finance already has live dashboards. The other departments are getting closer and closer to that. We're still fine-tuning it.
And I think if we just, from a perspective of communicating that to the public, you know, this is alive, you know, here, and this is static, those type of, you know, just communicating that as we mature. But I'm excited about this, this is a passion, as I've already said. And I think there's a lot of, you know, opportunity to educate, not only ourselves and our teams at the city, you know, department level, but the community as well. But we have a really good story to tell on a number of fronts. And we just need to, you know, have good storytellers like our, our communication director behind us to make all of that come to the forefront.
Absolutely. And we need to do better about that, because even on this one, you know, it tries to tell the story, but it may not be effective, right? Because it's saying, hey, it aligns to the highest standard, our standard is different than the cities around us. It's a better standard, we don't prioritize calls. But then again, this is one measure on a page of six measures, and it's, you know, there's a lot of techs going on here, but it's going to tell the story that, and on the one, on the measures that align to ICMA, it does qualify that. So if we are aligned to a standard, we always say where we get it. So the Fire Department's got an ISO system they're using, they're the highest rating there. It says, hey, we're, we're, this is the standard we're adhering to, because we don't want people thinking we're making up standards, right? Say, oh yeah, of course that looks great. But if the standard across the country is two minutes, it's not so great. And so we try and tell that story. That's probably one of the weaknesses in the system right now, is the story's there, one of the weaknesses in the system right now is, the story's there, but it's told through a lot of words. And so it's maybe not communicating effectively to the public on how good is good, how great is great?
Right.
And why this is so
Back to the, to the mayor's point about driving everyone to excellence, because we've all had, you know, is this a five-star, you know, meal tonight? Or was this a four-star? Or somewhere, you know?
Absolutely.
And, you know, if we're expecting everything to be a five-star, you know, what is that? You know, it's different for all of us.
Absolutely.
So back on the principles slide, you have the seven principles. I'll, I'll challenge my peers across, around the table that if this is, I don't know where you got this from.
ICMA.
I looked for it. You had to log on to be able to get this particular. You couldn't get it on the free portion. That's fine. But I think if we had the principles behind our performance management, we could build them upon this, or we could simply adopt this. And that these are the things, I'd like to see this being the seven principles adopted from ICMA by the city council, something to that effect.
Absolutely.
And that way, it gets some more, you know, we've thought about this, and then if we can have discussion on this in the future.
To create that overarching guide frame, kind of the foundation for how we're approaching performance management. And to be clear, this drives HR a little bit crazy, because in the ICMA world, performance management is organizational service delivery. In the HR world, in every organization, performance management is personnel management.
Personnel.
So you'll see these terms sometimes used interchangeably. That's why I always call it performance FBTX, but that is a little bit of a sticky point, because it's the same word meaning completely different things.
Of course, of course. But you have to be specific about what you're focused on.
Absolutely.
How often are you comparing against the benchmark cities that you're choosing? Sorry if you went over there and I stepped out for a minute.
No, no, that's a great question. So every year, to get these awards, let's see where they're at. So this is fun, because when you look at all the stuff you have to do to put in for these awards, it's about 50 attachments. It's about two weeks' worth of work just to gather and pull the data in for it. And they, they make a show that we've updated every year and considered what our benchmarks are. And we participate in ICMA benchmarking. So they don't like us there because we set the bar.
Let me rephrase my question. How often are we looking at Addison, Carrollton, Southlake, Colleyville, Dallas, to say, this month, this is how we compare? Is it on an annual basis? Is it?
On an annual basis.
It's on an annual basis.
And that's only if they're in the open access benchmarking.
Correct. And are we open access?
We do submit, yes. And we're actually on the committee that drives performance management. So we have representation on the performance management advisory committee at ICMA. So we help drive the future of performance management for the whole governing body.
Are we open source?
Open source.
Like, would I be able to download data and manipulate it myself if I chose to?
No. But other cities have asked for the ability to join our system. So Capel has a login to come into our system and view. They have a great relationship, right? They want to be better, too. But no, not yet. We could get to that point. But the, the data lives outside in the cloud. It doesn't live in farmer's branch.
It's a governance access.
I think in finance, we do.
It's a governance access. That's all. Just have to figure out how you get that permission.
Yeah, you can download the financial, you know, what's hitting the
I'm just like thinking of like hackathons and stuff where people come in and say, here's the data we have, come up with some different solutions, as they look through it to maybe find opportunities, other things that aren't always internal. And, you know, when you ask, what does the potential innovation committee do? Things like that, looking at things like this, how to
And that's the goal.
The budget, the dollars, our checkbook, so to speak, that's all downloadable right now. It has been for a long time.
It's really nice. It's scrubbed for, I mean, you're, you're going to put check level detail out there, but not like check number this. You know, we're trying to do things to prevent hackers and
Obviously, there's stuff you're not going to
Folks that don't need as well.
Put out there, but it's, I think eventually moving like towards
Right.
what is that to where people are able to, you know, take a little bit more of a look behind the curtain and stuff and
Absolutely. And it's all public information.
Yeah.
It's all public information. And that's the goal we're going to with the maturity of the ERP system, is building those bridges. Because I would love to take it off the department heads to where they just need to validate the data and make sure there's, nothing's wrong in it. Because if it spikes, I need to know why it spiked. Was there an outlier? What happened? Because that's what Charles does when he looks at it. We're looking for the consistency over time. And if something moves, why did it move?
Right.
But yes, definitely, as, as the system matures, and we hope to be there in the next 18 months, working with IT on this, is creating more of that level of transparency. Because I think it'd be great if people could download it and help us see things we didn't see.
And I was just wondering if, like, we had a list of benchmark cities, the similar size, location, things like that, whether it's here locally, which I think is preferred, but also on a, on a bigger scale that has open access, that we could automate some of those things to where, as someone goes into the website and looks at our data, they can see how it compares almost immediately in real time, that hopefully isn't more work. It's more of like running a program or API or something that goes, fetches it, puts it up, and it is what it is. But we've already evaluated what they're putting out and how that relates. And I don't know, I'm just thinking it's more of, well, here we are, but do you have to do more research to figure it out? Or, as you said, is it static? This is as of December 31st, 2021, and that's the number we're measuring against for the rest of the year rather than real time? Are they progressing? Are we progressing? How does this look? And I'm just thinking long-term. This isn't
Oh, absolutely.
It probably goes more to the future conversation that Councilmember Merritt is requesting.
Oh, absolutely. The challenge is not us on this one, because originally, we were one of the only cities in DFW that even did this. More and more cities are moving in this direction. But if you look at cities that publicly put their data out there in a consumable format that makes sense, because we all struggle with this. Some of them just dump as much data as they can. And they're like, some have live data scrolling right now, and it's just, here it is. Do what you want with it. There's no context. But ICMA cities that are accredited in North Texas, I think it's Southlake, Dallas, and I believe Irving or Arlington. And so those, there's this very small group. For the others, they may have the data, but you'd have to request it, and it's not necessarily shown out there at this point in time. And then what are they measuring and why are, because different cities are going to measure different things. Some things are universal, police and fire.
Yeah.
Others, though, like, we measure number of square yards of sidewalks repaired, square yards of streets repaired, little things that other cities may not measure because it's just not a priority for, for those cities. And so that's, that's the challenge, is if other cities want to open benchmark with us, but then that also means they're in the arena with us. And I would love for that.
That was, that was the only reason I was asking about like the open source of the data, because anyone can make any data set, tell the story that they want to tell.
Absolutely.
And by allowing other people the opportunity to maybe rethink that, and how you're looking at and what they believe the story is telling, for at least even a different conversation, I think is important. I always think of
Absolutely.
the movie Thank You for Smoking, when he goes, you give this guy enough time, he'll disprove gravity, you know, with the data and tests that he'll run. But, I mean, it's just kind of, I don't know, for another, another day. Does, but
It may be worth clarifying this, because I heard a couple of comments about financial and live data. It's not. It's not. It's a, you know, and nor do we want people tapping into our financial system. It's a feed that pushes out to that website that I showed you on a previous council meeting, about weekly. So it's fresh. It's, it's turning fresh, but it's, they're not touching our system.
And that's, I think that's good. I'm just like thinking.
Yeah, that's fantastic. And so we're on the pathway. And so based on the conversation, are y'all feeling good with what direction it's moving for performance management? We'll